Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everyone to the June 23rd, 2022 work session of the Henrico County School Board. At this time, I would like to make note of Mrs. Shea and Mrs. Ogburn's physical absence from today's work session. They previously notified Board members of their request to participate electronically from remote locations due to a medical condition and personal reasons respectively. Our school board policy P2-04-006, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations requires a majority vote of the board members present at the primary or central meeting location to allow board members to participate in a meeting from a remote location. In accordance with the school board policy, do I hear a motion?
I move that the school board approve the remote participation of Mrs. Shea and Mrs. Ogburn for today's meeting.
Motion made by Mrs. Atkins. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. Now let's do a roll call vote. Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Mrs. Shea and Mrs. Ogburn's request has been approved. This meeting is being livestreamed on the HCPS website. We'll begin our meeting with a roll call. When I call your name, please verbally indicate your presence. Reverend Cooper?
Present.
Mrs. Shea?
Present.
Mrs. Ogburn?
Present.
And Mrs. Atkins?
Mrs. Atkins?
Present.
Present.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that a quorum of the board is physically present and Mrs. Shea and Mrs. Ogburn are participating electronically. I ask that Mrs. Shea and Mrs. Ogburn verbally note if they need to leave the meeting and subsequently verbally note when they return. Now on to the agenda for today. The first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. May I get a motion?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Atkins. Let's do a roll call vote. Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Mrs. Ogburn?
Aye.
Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is closed session. Board members, may I have a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the school board go into closed session for the discussion of matters under items A1 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Court of Agenda, Virginia, as amended pertaining to the assignment appointment, performance salaries, disciplining resignation and release of contract for specific school board employees, including the evaluation of the superintendent.
Thank you for the motion, Reverend Cooper. May I have a second?
Second.
Who wants it? Okay, Mrs. Shea. Motion seconded by Mrs. Shea. And now for a roll call vote. Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Mrs. Ogburn?
Aye.
Mrs. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. We're now going into closed session. Welcome back to the June 23rd, 2022 work session. The next item on the agenda is the certification of closed session. Board members, may I have a motion to certify closed session?
I move that the school board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each school board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper, for that motion. May I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Now for a roll call vote. Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
Ms. Ogburn?
Aye.
Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. Closed session has been certified. Dr. Cashwell will now present items from the superintendent.
Thank you, Mrs. Goncella, and good afternoon, members of the board. For the first item, I am seeking your approval of the appointment of administrative personnel.
Board members, may I have a motion?
I move that the school board approve the appointment of administrative personnel.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins, for that motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Now for a roll call vote. Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
Ms. Ogburn?
Aye.
Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it.
Thank you. The board has just approved the following individuals as new administrators. Jennifer Rucker, Director of Student Support and Wellness. Robert Stevens II, new principal at Quiocasen Middle School. Quintina Jackson, principal for an Achievable Dream Certified Academy Secondary School Program. So mouthful there. Kristy Budney, new principal at Carver Elementary School. Rachel Broujois, principal at Mayford Elementary School. I'm sorry, I believe she's Rochelle Broujois, principal at Mayford Elementary School. And Leanna Moss Everhart, principal at Pemberton Elementary School. We're excited to welcome these new administrators to these posts. And for the next item, if it suits the board, I would like to shift, rather than taking 5.01 as the next item, I'd like to take item 7.01, the Equity Ambassador Program update, and shift it to the next portion of our agenda to honor the time our students have dedicated to be with us today and allow them to be on their way after this presentation, if that suits the board. All right? If so, then we'll have Dr. Manns come forward, as well as our outstanding student presenters representing high schools across the school division to showcase the incredible work of our Equity Ambassador Program. We're so pleased to welcome our students to the podium this afternoon. Dr. Manns?
Good afternoon, members of the school board and Superintendent Cashwell. The Equity Ambassador Program provides students from across the district the opportunity to discuss current issues affecting our schools while also equipping them with the knowledge and leadership skills necessary to advance equity and diversity inclusivity initiatives within their own community. This is in direct alignment with the Division's strategic plan and equity and opportunity and safety and wellness cornerstone. Every high school student is eligible, but they are asked to submit an application. Over the last two years, more than 400 students have applied to be part of our program. We hope to continue to build upon this level of engagement and make an even greater impact within the HCPS school district. As part of today's presentation, a representative from each of our award-winning school Equity Ambassador chapters will share an update with you.
Good afternoon, members of the school board and Superintendent Cashwell. My name is Xavier Bessie, and I am a part-time program assistant with the Office of EDO, Equity Diversity and Opportunity. This year, I had the pleasure of leading the book clubs and held monthly meetings with the students to discuss specific sections and themes from their book. Participation in the book clubs were voluntary and parent-approved. Following that, the students recorded reflective podcasts or wrote a personal narrative. It was a wonderful learning experience for me as well as our students. We are now going to shift our attention to the events that have been sponsored by all of the Equity Ambassadors in Henrico County this year. Each school group must plan at least two events or activities that directly address issues of equality or inclusivity in order to keep their charter as an Equity Ambassador at our schools. On the basis of qualitative student reporting and quantitative statistics gathered across the entire school, we are able to identify these areas of concern. Members of the program's executive committee will now present brief descriptions of these activities and events, as well as the rationale behind their decisions regarding those activities that we implemented during the previous academic year.
My name is Ibram Dumalik, and this year I had the honor of serving as Glen Allen High School's Executive Representative. Our first activity consisted of conducting a survey with the purpose of gaining a deeper understanding of diversity education in the Glen Allen community. After over 200 responses, we discovered that there is a potential for improvement in terms of providing more diversity-related material in classrooms, based on the feedback we received from faculty, administration, and our fellow students. We were successful in locating educators who did an exceptional job of successfully implementing curriculum relating to diversity into their classrooms. As you can see from the slide, POC representation tends to decrease tremendously from elementary to high school. This should not be the case. There should be more POC representation throughout a student's educational journey. We were able to put this information to use in order to better the execution of our second event. Equity Ambassadors hosted a documentary viewing and discussion focusing on the PBS documentary, Asian Americans. This is a five-part documentary spanning five hours, so we focused our viewing on the fourth episode titled Generation Rising. This episode discussed the labor movement and Vietnam resistance on college campuses. After viewing, participants met to discuss the documentary, AAPI history, and voices in the classroom over pastries. It was a great success, and several underclassmen showed interest in joining Equity Ambassadors next year.
My name is Samaj, and I've had the privilege of being selected to be the Executive Associate for the Randolph chapter of the Equity Ambassador Program. One of our primary objectives with the students at Virginia Randolph is inclusion. As a result, our two mandatory programs were oriented on community service. Our first event was divided into two halves. The first event, first part, was the candygram sale. Positive words were printed on the candygrams by the other members. The Randolph family assembled the candygrams, which were then sold and distributed by the students. The second phase was to use the proceeds from the goodies to open a school store for the instructors and kids to use. Our school store's mission was to supply not just school supplies for our children and staff, but also PPE products. We provided masks, hand sanitizers, tissues, and disinfectant wipes, and sprays, among other supplies. The second thing that we did was work on a project to improve the appearance of the school. We encouraged the students to participate in the refurbishment of our school by painting the walls with images of natures that are thought to calm the mind and spirit. In addition, in order to promote this activity, a neighborhood and a mom-and-pop business provided catering for the meal.
Good afternoon, school board and Dr. Cashwell. My name is Damon Parrish, and I am the Executive Associate for Highland Springs High School. Our goal this school year was to ensure space for all students, that provided them with resources they require, and making students feel represented through school-based activities. Our group was able to organize two events that proved to be both productive and pleasant for students and reflected the goals we set out to achieve. For our first event, we provided and continue to provide hygiene goods to all students who may not have them easily accessible or available outside of school. Despite the fact that we now inhabit a new school building, we still do not possess dispensers for certain hygiene items in our restrooms. Because of this, we implemented and assigned our hygiene stations in every hallway throughout the school. Beyond products specific to menstruation, we recognize male students and those who identify outside of that require hygiene supplies as well. As a result, we expanded our stations to provide deodorants, lotions, toothpastes, and toothbrushes, wipes, and soap in addition to menstruation products. As for our second event, during Black History Month, fellow Equity Ambassadors participated in a standing wax museum to commemorate important African-American figures. The museum enabled students to learn about historical and current prominent African-American individuals who have made great contributions to history, exposing them to people they may not have known otherwise. Students that took part were able to conduct research on their chosen individual and write a bio for the student that's... They were able to write a bio for the student tourists to read in this way, both learned material that was not offered in the classroom. The event had a tremendous impact at our school, since community stakeholders such as parents, local companies, teachers, students, and so on, also supported by continuing to supply and donate items for our stations. The museum proved to be both empowering and educational for students and families that attended, as well as faculty. We received numerous comments, emails, and students even asked if they might be able to participate in the following year. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Sagar Murthy, and I've been chosen as the Executive Representative for Freeman High School for this past school year. This year marked the Fourth Annual Freeman Family Culture Day. This was the first time it was held in person since 2019, and was our most eclectic and well-attended culture day yet. Culture Day in Freeman is a day dedicated to celebrate the cultural and ethnic diversity of the community. Student volunteers can be presenters, performers, crafts organizers, and even help with logistics. Students share unique games, such as docchi, squid game, chess, and numerous other ones. Food from their various cuisines, Hispanic, Asian, Arabic, and Indian. Their music and their various native attire through our fashion show. And many other aspects of their culture that they might not otherwise have had the opportunity to share at school. It not only provides students with a voice, but it also allows for a more meaningful and intimate community connection. Our other function of the school year was our first-ever AP Course Fair. During our many Equity Ambassador meetings here and at our school, the lack of diversity in our higher-level classes continued to stick out. And so, the Freeman Equity Ambassadors teamed up with the Freeman Faculty Equity Team to host a large AP Course Fair, where students were able to see colorful travel boards about the course and content, and hear from people who reflected Freeman's diverse backgrounds, while also taking a look at the syllabus and AP review books. The AP Course Fair saw a large and diverse crowd. We wanted to show people that there are people who look like them in AP courses. We wanted to let students know that taking an AP course does not force you to take the exam. We wanted to let students know that the school would help students academically and financially if they decided to take an AP course. At Freeman High School, the Mavericks are constantly striving toward equity and diversity. As always, go Mavs. I'll also be speaking for Verona High School. So instead of concerning equity and diversity when organizing Verona's events, they decided to focus on unity and inclusion. Their first event was a police forum in hopes of strengthening the relationship among students and authorities. Next, they organized a variety of Black History Month activities, including educational games, a photo booth, and much more. Last but not least, they organized Verona Special Olympics for students with mental and/or physical disabilities. It was a day filled with support, games, food, music, and volunteers, including some of our very own state champs.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Mariana Casamora, and I'm a part of Equity Ambassador's Godwin Chapter. Because there was not really a program at Godwin that did that, our Equity Ambassador's team chose to focus on building a platform that broadcasts cultural or really any event that contributes to bringing equity at our school. This effort was carried out through the Equity Ambassador's Bulletin Board. Our first event honored Women's History Month. During the month of March, we designed and distributed flyers with QR code that allowed Godwin women and girls to submit photos of themselves or others, as well as something that they had accomplished during their time at Godwin. This project was able to highlight the accomplishments of women in Godwin and truly allowed Godwin students to honor previous and present female students or educators. Thank you.
My name is Minna Doolbet, and I'm a member of the Tucker High Academic Executive Committee for the 2122 school year. This school year at Tucker, we have placed a strong emphasis on cultural responsiveness and education for our multi-ethnic student body on the myriad of cultures and ways of identifying oneself that are in existence. We invited a former employee of the Governor's Office of Equity Inclusion to come to us as a guest speaker on her experience belonging as an immigrant and the different challenges she had as a result of this. During the course of her speech, the Equity Ambassadors engaged in discourse with her regarding her professional endeavors and personal experiences as an Asian-American professional. This event was broadcast in real time on the school's website so that everyone could view it. For our second event, we had a cultural week. Students constructed stands that showed some aspect of their culture or identity background. At these stands, in addition to food and music, students were able to participate in a variety of activities and obtain information about the culture. Throughout the course of the week, we participated in this activity during our breaks for lunch. We hope that by taking these steps, as many people as were able to attend would be able to do so, and that the various cultures that were there will be able to share some of their customs with the kids of Tucker. In the end, scheduling the events to happen during our lunch periods allowed for almost all the students to participate, as we hoped, and allowed for some very positive feedback from the students. The cultures presented were able to talk about their customs and the various activities they brought, educating students, faculty, and staff on all the beautiful ways of identifying that are a part of what makes our community at Tucker so unique.
Good afternoon. My name is Zara Ahmed, and I am the Executive Community Member from Deep Run High School. This year, we conducted two projects. Our first one was called the Identity Project. The Identity Project consisted of the collaboration of over 1,500 students and most of the Deep Run staff. This project's goal was to reinforce to students that they are not alone. To achieve this goal, the ambassadors of Deep Run proposed a project in which students would write aspects of their identities on a blue or green flashcard. Those flashcards were then constructed into a large world map. The majority of students in their English class got an opportunity to write on this note card a word or phrase that they believed defined their identity. Once the map was constructed, students got an opportunity to see a visual representation of the multiple and diverse identities that make up this Deep Run student population in a very frequent hallway. Our second project is the Uncomfortable Conversation Series, which is a continuation of a joint effort initiative by the Deep Run Equity Ambassadors and Minority Student Union. Each year, a different topic is chosen, and questions are generated from Deep Run students. This year's topic was Asian-American experience. Throughout this conversation, Deep Run emphasized the voices of Asian-Americans in our community and gave them a spotlight to discuss the issues that impacted their communities. Bringing light to these uncomfortable topics and discussions in Deep Run gives the school an opportunity to take action on improving the situations for the students. Overall, Deep Run's ambassadors conducted two projects where students were ultimately given a voice and an opportunity to be seen and heard by their peers. We believe that our projects help emphasize the main theme of creating a culture of belonging. Thank you.
My name is Stewart Kareem, and I'm a junior at Henrico High School. I'll be presenting as the Equity Caucus Member. The Henrico High School Equity Ambassadors had two goals this year. One was to support the positive representation of minority groups on campus, and two was to partner with administration in their planning of policies that promote equity and opportunity. In pursuit of these goals, the HHS Equity Ambassadors co-planned the fifth annual Henrico High School Black History Month program. We worked in tangent with the Black Student Union and Roots Organization to incorporate multiple perspectives and representation of the Black community. To meet our second goal, we created and facilitated student and faculty-focused groups to foster conversation and gather data for our school's administration for planning of the 2022-2023 school year. We decided to go with the focus group model, since historically our school has had low participation in school-level and district-wide surveys. Focus groups were created using a mixture of student volunteers and students who were selected to participate. Faculty groups were created solely through teacher volunteers. Student groups were facilitated by Equity Ambassadors. Questions for discussion centered around the following topics: mental health, school safety, equity opportunity, communication between stakeholders, and discipline. Data was aggregated and presented to our school's Equity Team Lead by administrative intern, Mr. Green. This information will be used to help set equity goals as a part of the Henrico High School VCSIP process. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Catherine, and I'm a member of Hermitage High School's Equity Ambassador Organization. The activities that took place at Hermitage this year concentrated on our school's past and fostering an inclusive environment for all students. A significant number of students expressed their discontent with having to go back to school at the beginning of the 2021-2022 academic year. This was made very evident by the fact that they did not participate in any school activities. This was reflected in how unenthusiastic people were about participating in our school's pep rallies. As a direct consequence of this, the Equity Ambassador Group at Hermitage has made the decision to support teachers and staff in the preparation of pep rallies. We were under the impression that if our opinions were taken into consideration throughout the planning stages, the event as a whole would be of higher quality. We wanted to make these rallies more welcoming for everyone, not just athletes or certain student organizations, so that everyone could feel like they were being acknowledged. During the month of March, we hosted a Spirit Week event that had activities focusing on both cultural heritage and mental health awareness. These were conceived with the goal of making students more at ease with the knowledge that their classmates could empathize with the challenges they faced. Students who reported feeling that their culture was well-represented in the classroom were more likely to talk openly about their experiences. Stress is something that everyone goes through, especially in the last few months of a school year. These feelings do not make you less capable or less intelligent. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine, and thank you all to all of our Equity Ambassador presenters today. Let's give them a round of applause for their hard work. Through the Student Voice and Equity Ambassador programming, we hope that all students will see the power of their voices and actions. Richmond native tennis champion and human rights activist, Arthur Ashe, said it best: "Start where you are, use what you have, do what you can." This is what our Equity Ambassadors do every single year, and we are proud to highlight their work for you today.
Thank you, Dr. Manns, and the entire team of students. I know you're kind of hidden from our view right now. If you don't mind coming forward once again, so we can give you one more round of applause where we can see you, thank you so much for your efforts. They're incredible. And I would offer, if board members have questions or comments they want to share with our ambassadors at this time, and then we promise we'll send you on your way so you can enjoy summer. Thanks again for giving of your time, not only throughout the school year, but this afternoon.
Out of respect for you, I won't repeat what Dr. Cashwell just said, but please, no, we really did appreciate you taking time today to share all the wonderful things and the equity work you have going on across our comprehensive high schools. And I guess I'll start with Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Vice Chair Goncella. So I don't really have any questions, but I just want to say that I'm always impressed by the work of the Equity Ambassadors and the opportunities for student voice to be amplified in HCPS. I want to give kudos to Dr. Manns, the EDO team, and our students. The work of that, this department is doing is so rich and is embedded throughout our strategic plan. And when we go to the department's page on Henrico Schools' website, I feel that the information is not laid out in a way that's user-friendly or even designed in a way that highlights the awesome work that's being done across the division. I know this may be a cost or resource-related question, but I'd love to know, how can we support a redesign of the department's website so we can easily access presentations like the one presented here today?
I'd like you to know, we're actually revamping our entire Henrico Schools' website, which would include various department pages. And so, I saw Mrs. Cox rising to give that same answer. If I covered it, just know a revamp is underway. Our incredible web team actually gave us a preview of that effort. They've been working with the entire leadership team on that, so more to come.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. I think the rest of your colleagues would probably agree with that, so I'm glad it's underway. We can't wait till all the information we want to find is readily accessible out on our website. I guess next, I'm going to go to Ms. Ogburn.
I echo what Reverend Cooper said, but also, I was truly impressed with how each school is meeting the needs of the kids in their school. I mean, from providing personal care products to everything that you're doing is just incredible to me, to meet the needs of the kids who go there. And that's what Student Voice is all about. You're letting us know what you need, and so kudos to Dr. Manns for implementing this, taking it, and running with it, but to the students for making it what it is and doing what you do for the benefit of everyone in your school. I'm just so, so impressed. I can't tell you. It's one of those things that you hope when somebody has an idea it will work this well, but it's because of all of you working together. And hopefully, that sense of working together and working for your community will hold you for many years to come. When you're adults out in the world, you'll spread the love then, too. But thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. Next, I'm going to go to Ms. Atkins.
So certainly, students are stakeholders in their own learning. So you are a stakeholder in your own learning. And also leveraging the opportunity... and also leveraging the opportunities that Henrico County Public School provides. And through the EDO office, you've leveraged your thoughts, turned them into ideas, and you put them into action that helped yourself grow. You've helped others see what is possible when you move. You did that. And so I hope that you take this experience and expand it not only in the school that you're in, but in your communities as well, because you can do amazing things with an idea that's turned into an action. And so I'm very proud of each of you, and I'm very grateful because I know I think you're going to continue the work that you do, whether it's formal through the EDO office or even in your own homes, understanding that when you see a need and you complement it with an idea that you implement, you make a difference every time. So I'm proud of you. Thank you for your presentations, and I look forward to see all that you're going to achieve.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Mrs. Shea?
Thank you. You know, one of the things that really jumped out at me during your presentation is the same thing that Ms. Ogburn noted, and that's really how individual your plans are for each of your schools and how you really took time to identify what the needs of your schools were and how to meet those. We're certainly not a one-size-fits-all kind of county, and the work y'all are doing really boots-on-the-ground to make a difference in your individual communities is really admirable. So thank you for taking time to make this a really genuinely implemented program by individualizing it to your schools. Also, that was a great Go Mavs. I know Dr. Marshall would be proud.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. And now it's my turn, which I started off, so I'll just close by just saying thank you. Anytime we're looking for an answer in education, all we need to do is look to our students and Student Voice, and you've certainly found it in each of our schools. As Ms. Atkins said, you know, action, opportunity, there are so many opportunities, and just thank you for taking your time today. And we look forward to seeing you again, whether it's back here, whether it's in your school, or I know I see at least one senior. So good luck to you and keep making a difference in your community. Anyway, thank you very much. Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you again. We appreciate you being here. And I think we actually have some lunch or snacks or food for you, so please go enjoy, and thanks again for your great presentation. All right, members of the board, the next item I bring forth is related to our annual Henrico survey. And as you'll recall, this survey is aligned to our strategic plan and helps us monitor attainment to our goals and alignment to our cornerstones. And Dr. Tiffany Hinton will come forward to provide that overview for you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. This afternoon, I am here to provide an update on the 2022 HCPS survey results. Your call that this is a timeline that we shared with you throughout the year, showing the progress updates on our strategic plan work. To conclude the school year, we have the results of our 2022 surveys, which is a key performance metric used to monitor the goals of Destination 2025. Annually, we administer surveys to students, family, and staff to measure the progress of our goals. The surveys are designed around the four cornerstones of safety and wellness, academic progress, equity and opportunity, and relationships. We continue to partner with the Metropolitan Educational Research Consortium in the School of Education at Virginia Commonwealth University in this effort. They work with us to annually review and update the survey items specifically aligned with our strategic plan drivers and administer and analyze the survey results. This year, surveys were available online in March through April to students in grades five through twelve, families, and staff. The family survey was available in six languages, including English, Spanish, Arabic, Portuguese, Dari, and Vietnamese, and a paper version was available if requested. With the online surveys, we embedded audio into both the English and Spanish surveys to provide families with additional assistance if needed. Families utilizing this feature could click on the audio button in the survey, and questions and response choices would be read aloud. The surveys were communicated through a variety of platforms, including the HCPS website, social media, principal weekly communication to families, paper flyers, and the Binder e-newsletter. We also partnered with the HCPS Immigrant Refugee and Limited English Speaking Community Partnership Group and the Department of Family and Community Engagement to provide encouragement and additional opportunities for family participation. In total, thirty-one thousand eight hundred nineteen stakeholders participated in the survey. Response rates were sixty-six percent for staff, fourteen percent for families, and seventy percent for students. Rates for staff and families exceeded pre-pandemic participation levels. Student participation was lower than in 2019, but higher than in 2021, when a large portion of students were receiving instruction virtually. In an effort to increase survey participation among families, we offered opportunities for family and school incentives. Family members who completed the survey and wanted to be entered into a prize drawing could complete a brief prize entry form at the end of the survey. We were able to randomly select one family from each magisterial district to win a prize bag donated by the HCPS Department of Family and Community Engagement. Additionally, the Henrico Education Foundation generously donated five hundred dollars in professional development funds to the school in each magisterial district with the highest family survey response rate. Congratulations to the faculties at Glenn Lee, Springfield Park, Pemberton, Mayford, and Shorepomp Elementary Schools for successfully engaging your families in the survey. As you review the report, you will note that response choices ranged from one, meaning completely disagree, to six, meaning completely agree. Scores from one to three represent some level of disagreement, and scores from four to six represent some level of agreement. Data are reported by respondent group and include the percent response for each response choice, item average response, and a combined percent agree and disagree. Change in average from the 2021 survey administration is also included. This change column allows us to see areas that it may have been positively impacted by new processes or programs aligned with our strategic plan implementation. You'll also see that many survey items were asked across respondent groups, but some were unique to only one or two groups, or may have only been asked to respondents with a particular experience. Survey questions are reviewed annually for relevancy. Therefore, some items from prior years were removed and others added to gather more specific information about an area of focus. For example, in prior years, the survey included one item gauging perceptions of bullying in school. To delve into this area further, that item was replaced this year with individual items exploring perceptions of different types of bullying. So you may see those differences as you review the report. Each item in the survey was associated with one of the Division's four cornerstone. So this slide shows the overall average response to questions within each cornerstone. You can see that, on average, all stakeholder groups favorably reported on each cornerstone. All averages were within the agreement range. Generally, students tended to have the least favorable responses across each cornerstone, with staff having the highest in all but safety and wellness. Also, across all groups, equity and opportunity was the most favorable reported cornerstone. When we look at the change in cornerstone averages from 2019, which was the first year of our strategic plan, you can see that averages increased among all groups in academic growth and equity and opportunity, and for most groups in relationships. These increases mean that stakeholders are viewing these areas more favorably than they did in 2019. However, we've seen a decline in the cornerstone of safety and wellness across all groups during the same timeframe, which is not unexpected in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. The survey report contains a wealth of information that Division leaders and school administrators will use in future planning. The next few slides will highlight some of the key survey findings by sharing items from each group with the most and least favorable responses. Areas of strength were considered as items having a ninety percent or greater favorable response, and areas of opportunity were considered as items having a twenty-five percent or greater unfavorable response. As we discuss the results, you'll notice that some areas are perceived by some stakeholder groups as strengths, and others may perceive those areas as opportunities. More specifically, you'll notice that generally, families and staff have more positive perceptions than students. For the cornerstones of safety and wellness, several strengths and opportunities were noted, as you can see on the slide. One area, students feeling fairly treated by adults at the school, was noted by a strength for families and an opportunity for students. So this is an area for further exploration. Also, as I mentioned earlier, additional items were included this year to collect more detailed information on perceptions of bullying, which is noted as an opportunity in our survey results. For the 2223 school year, several plans are underway to address this concern. HCPS will renew our efforts to communicate the availability of anonymous alerts. HCPS has anonymous reporting system for bullying, depression, drugs, and safety threats that can be accessed online as well as by smartphone or tablet. HCPS faculty and staff will continue providing weekly research-based social and emotional learning curriculum to all K through twelve students that builds student skills such as empathy, conflict resolution, digital citizenship, self-awareness, self-management, and responsible decision-making that have been shown to prevent students from engaging in bullying. Additionally, HCPS will provide clarification on what bullying is and what bullying is not through the Student Code of Conduct. Many behaviors that look like bullying may be just as serious, but may require different response strategies, and recognizing and addressing these appropriately is an important step towards ensuring safe and supportive school climates. Looking at academic growth, we see many noteworthy strengths and several areas of opportunity. For example, both staff and families noted the efforts that schools put forth to encourage student attendance. In exploring the survey items related to schools providing students with deeper learning experiences connected to our Henrico learner profile, there was some disconnect between staff and student perceptions. Staff reported providing authentic and connected learning experiences, whereas students felt that learning experiences could include more of the deeper learning components. Looking forward, all four pillars of the deeper learning model have been integrated into the instructional model and are included throughout the model's components of design, delivery, and assessment. Professional learning on the instructional model would be a focus for all staff as we continue to focus on the unique needs of our students in the 2223 school year. An additional opportunity noted in the survey results was around raising student awareness of career learning experiences and family awareness of college and career pathways. In 2122, HCPS onboarded Major Clarity, a student-driven online college and career readiness platform to assist all students, grades four through twelve, to discover future careers aligned with their interests and abilities and merge their career exploration with academic planning. Within the first year of implementation, HCPS exceeded its goal of student account activation, which included completion of a career assessment, and received Major Clarity Platinum Power User Status, the highest designation reserved for the top ten percent of the Division users nationwide. For the 2223 school year, the Year Two Implementation Plan will include a campaign targeted at introducing Major Clarity to families and other members of the school community in building their awareness of and participation in Major Clarity's career learning experiences. Another area of focus for the Division is around the cornerstone of equity and opportunity. There are many strengths to celebrate in this area from the perspectives of staff and families. For example, both families and staff agreed that the schools are responsive to the different backgrounds of students, that schools teach about different cultures, and that staff are comfortable interacting with stakeholders from different backgrounds. For opportunities, some students perceived that schools treat certain student groups differently than others. Last but certainly not least, many facets of relationships were a strength in our survey results, including family perceptions of being an active partner in a student's educational experience and staff treating all students with respect. Both families and staff also felt that adults at the school care about our students. One area noted as a strength for families but an opportunity for students was the survey item related to students fitting in with other students at the school. Therefore, more information is needed from students to understand how schools can better support student belonging. For 2223, several new programs are being implemented to support students in feeling connected to their schools. Supported by the Office of Equity, Diversity, and Opportunity, student belonging pilot programs have been funded for two middle schools by the Henrico Education Foundation. Additionally, a summer bridge program is being piloted at one high school. The summer program comprises six practical skill lessons and weekly-aligned small-group coaching sessions. During the six-week introductory process, the students will also have the opportunity to participate in excursions with their group, including opportunities for families to join them. During the school term, participants will engage in monthly meetings and opportunities designed to curate student leaders, elevate school-community connectivity, and allow space for these students to grow. Lastly, there is also increased focus on supporting our student clubs and organizations in an effort to grow student-school connectivity. Throughout this presentation, themes and connections to our strategic plan work and other recent presentations are evident. However, more work will be done as we head into the fall to analyze the survey data in more depth at both the Division and school levels. The Division survey report will be available on the HCPS website and through social media. School-level reports will be used by school teams to develop school quality plans for the upcoming school year, and principals have been asked to share information and results with their communities. As we noted throughout today's presentation, there were several areas of disconnect between student and adult perceptions. Student voices are the most important as we develop and implement strategies to address areas of improvement of their school experience. So to learn more about their perspectives, staff will meet with the Superintendent Student Advisory Group in the fall to review the survey findings and facilitate discussions for next steps. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Hinton. Board members, I'm certain we have some questions or comments. Let's start with Ms. Ogburn.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And Dr. Hinton, I appreciate that's such a thorough recap of the survey. When I initially went over the survey information that you sent us, I was, and you already addressed it, was surprised at the low response from families. But I appreciate the effort that went into getting more families to participate because it's so important that we hear from them. And you're right, I agree that student voice is so important as well, but I just wish there was more we could do to encourage our families because it's with that feedback that we learn how we can do things better. So I appreciate the efforts that went into getting the folks that did participate to do it. But I want to specifically address, and you did, bullying because that really stood out to me as something that was of great concern, mainly because I saw such a difference between what our students felt and what our staff was reporting. There's a great difference in their opinions there on how things are handled. And I appreciate that you shared with us that more is coming as to how to handle this and to continue to work to, you know, put skills in place for kids to handle it, but also understand the effects if they are the bully. But one thing I would like to suggest, Dr. Cashwell, if we could get something maybe in the fall, that we have a specific discussion about bullying in our schools and maybe discuss what more we can do and and maybe discuss what more we can do and see the results of the initiatives that Dr. Hinton was just telling us about. Because obviously, this is not just a Henrico issue, this is a society issue, this is a national issue, but I think Henrico can possibly do more, and, but if nothing else, we can highlight that what we are doing so that parents can know more. So I would suggest that maybe this fall sometime, we get a discussion just on bullying itself.
Mrs. Ogburn, we're happy to provide the board additional information. And I would just point out that, yeah, this has been an ongoing concern for us, and I think it was probably a year ago, we were looking at data from this survey and had a discussion about it. And as Dr. Hinton mentioned, in our effort to hear more specifics about this topic from students, we added questions because we realized that the question we had related to bullying before was more general in nature. So this survey data is one really important piece, and you saw the student response rates were high, and that's what we wanted to do is really dig deeper into what our students were thinking and feeling about this issue so that we can make sure that the plans we have been putting in place really are meeting student needs. So this is an important point in time for us as we have a lot more specific data than we had prior to this survey administration related to this issue. So yes, absolutely, we'll continue to update the board on our efforts there.
That would be great. Thank you very much. That's all from me.
Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. Reverend Cooper?
Thank you so much, Vice Chair, Kinsella. So, Dr. Hinton, thank you again for the work that you do and your team as well. Can you go to Slide 14? On Slide 14, you talk about the school-level reports will be used by principals in developing the school quality plans. Can you kind of elaborate a little bit more on that?
Sure. As part of the school quality plan process, schools use a variety of data. They're looking at academic data, they're looking at behavior data, they're looking at the perceptions data that we gather from this survey as well as all of the other surveys that are given throughout the year. So they'll look for patterns across that data and develop goals and strategies for addressing areas of opportunity that they identify.
So with those reports, are they shared with the general public?
We ask the principals to develop a plan for sharing those results with their communities.
So what are the timelines for those plans to be shared publicly when they do? Is it consistent or is it individually based on the school?
We have the docile directors, the school-level directors work with their school teams to develop that timeline.
Okay. Thanks for that. Quick, another question. Since the schools will receive those school-level reports, do we have a breakdown of the data on a district basis, district level? I ask this because when we're analyzing the family responses, which tends to be extremely low, it helps us to see if certain demographics are overly represented, and it could help us better plan on how to reach or target other families that are often underrepresented in the survey responses. I would love to know of the 5,585 families who responded, how many of those families were from the Fairfield District? Was their voice perspective fairly represented? Those are the types of questions that would be answered if we would receive the breakdown of the data on a school-by-school and district level. It might also paint a different picture of what went well in the opportunities for growth as it relates to the four cornerstones. And I just want to echo Mrs. Ogburn's sentiment. The response rate from our families was still extremely low, 1% lower than the previous year. I want to say I applaud you and your team for providing the survey in multiple languages and in various formats. The survey was also communicated with various platforms, partnering with groups and depths within the division, so thank you for that. In your discussions of analyzing the data, what would you say may have contributed to the low responses for our families?
Well, as you can see, it's been an ongoing issue that we've talked about for multiple years, trying to get our families to participate. I think that there has been a lot of communications coming out, a lot of surveys, some of our families have survey fatigue, their students are having some survey fatigue. So that would be what I would recommend, you know, my analysis of why we continue to have some lower response rates for our families.
So I guess we continue to investigate. I love the prize patrol, I think that's very creative and helpful. I'd love to, you know, hear more what we can do to kind of increase that. Quickly, can I, I just want to speak on safe and wellness. So I want to focus on that, not necessarily any questions, but I just want to make a few observations. From the stakeholder survey report, responses related to safe and wellness items were among the lowest average responses for staff and students. It signals to me kind of that there may have been a level of discomfort in responding to the statements addressing or discussing safety and wellness such as bullying, as Ms. Ogburn alluded to that particular area. I think we all could agree that there are opportunities for growth related to safe and wellness. Office of Family and Community Engagement just had a community town hall to center conversations around community violence, safety, wellness, et cetera, so we know it's a priority for our division. So we are definitely in agreement with that. Now, I would say a significant amount of emails and calls, et cetera, that I received from my constituents, whether it's teachers, staff, family, were related to concerns about safety and wellness in schools as we are currently aware of the nationwide trends. I know next steps are for staff to meet with student advisory in the fall to gather additional insight on areas of opportunity, but are there also any plans to explore or take a deeper dive into opportunities specifically focused on safe and wellness?
Yeah, I think I can speak to a few of those and certainly would say that, you know, engaging the student group in the fall wouldn't be a first step, it would be one of a multi-layer approach. And so some of the efforts we've begun planning now, we would even want to vet with our students, right? What have we missed? Get some feedback there. You mentioned the community conversation with family engagement. You know there are a number of joint task force happening, recognizing that a lot of the issues related to safety and wellness are community issues. So while the schools certainly have an important role in that, we see that this partnership on a broader level, whether it's our partners in county mental health, our county law enforcement, and there are all this intersection of all of those entities that provide the community's wraparound supports and infrastructure for safety and wellness. So we've been really focused on that work throughout the year, making sure that we're recognizing natural connections there and that we're also fostering opportunities to grow those and make sure that we're doing all that we can. So that's certainly not indicative of all the work that's happening there, and certainly individual schools are trying some different strategies, heightening, again, awareness around anonymous alerts and some tools that we do have that work effectively, that folks have told us, oh, they either forgot that it was there, didn't know. Recognizing, we've been in unusual time for the past two to three years, and so really just getting folks re-acclimated to some of the strong structures we do have, and then looking for gaps and providing some additional supports there.
Now, I appreciate that exhaustive response because I think it's necessary for our constituency to recognize that we have a robust effort in place, and I'm hoping that we will see the result of our efforts reflected in next year's survey results, saying that we've allayed, right, allayed the concerns that our staff and students have, if not a significant increase, but an increase acknowledging the fact that we're definitely intentional about those efforts. So thank you for that, Dr. Cashwell. Thank you so much, Dr. Hinton. That's all I have.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Atkins?
You and your team continue to do a great job of asking for information during a time where not just Henrico County Public School families, but our country are in a place of trying to figure out who to trust. And so I want to continue to give you and your team encouragement as you continue to ask, and all you can do is ask. And the more that you do prayerfully, we'll continue to get more information. I do believe, and when I review this data, and I'll continue to review it, but bullying is what stuck out the most to me, which is built really upon relationship. And when we look in our schools, oftentimes what we see is indicative of what's happening in communities or in the household. And I think that efforts around asking for data is wise. However, it has to be, and this is only Alicia Atkins' opinion, it has to be coupled with a community effort. Because if what's happening in our schools is indicative of what's happening in the community, then in order to better understand the behaviors behind what we're seeing, we have to understand what's happening in the community. And so my question to you is, how do we, how do we use this data? Or how do we use the effort behind asking for data to build trust and transparency? I think that has to almost come before the ask. So what are we doing in advance of asking for this survey to let folks know that this will influence decision-making?
Well, we have, before the survey is administered, we have a website that's designed specifically for information about the surveys. We work very closely with our communications department to share information with them, to put out the results of a prior-year surveys, making sure that they see what, you know, what the feedback was the prior year, what the school division has been doing. But we continue to try to communicate as much as we can.
I guess I'll ask in a different way because I think in our school system, we have approached asking for data in the same way over year, over year, over year. And I think we are seeing the trend of declining participation. So the ask is, what will you explore differently in order to garner transparency and trust so that families will participate more? Does that make sense?
So I think one of the things that I mentioned earlier was that we partnered with our immigrant and refugee group. And so I think that we could have some additional partnerships with some of our other advisory groups and other community groups to try to encourage survey participation in that way as well. But that was just one step we took this year.
And I'll acknowledge, you know, certainly don't want to put it all on Dr. Hinton here. I know that, you know, I think this is a school division effort, you know, even outside of this survey specifically, to continue to build trust in our community, right? And so we understand that we need to help build the context for why we're asking, and again, establish those strong trusting relationships even outside of this particular survey ask. And so I think that's something we've got an eye toward, and I don't know that we have all the answers now, but we're going to continue to strive to build that sense of trust and openness. And I think we'll continue to see positive results as we do that, not just with this particular survey, but in other ways as well.
Thank you for that. I have two ideas for your consideration. I know that you're going to go back with the team and think about other things to offer and implement. One is doing the exact thing you're doing with me with our students, so that they also know that not only were voices heard, but to offer an interpretation, not assume that they understand what these results mean. And I don't know the best way you would do that. I don't know if you use advisory, maybe to, you know, for middle and high school, using the advisory period, to say, these are the results, this is what it means, and here are some options, and do you have any feedback? I think that would also let students know that their opinion matters more than what I believe they think it does. So that's just one for consideration, offering an interpretation to students. The second is doing the very same thing with families. I know we're going to post this on the website. I myself had to look at it several times, and we're having a conversation because I have questions. I wonder if there's an opportunity to build transparency and trust by explaining it to families beyond just posting it on the website. I think that continues to build the relationship that we want to hear from you. So those are just two thoughts for consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Mrs. Shea?
Thank you, Ms. Kinsella. I'm Dr. Hinton, and I really appreciate your team. I know this is a, this is a significant lift in terms of data, and I know y'all really took to heart some of our feedback from last year, specifically around the bullying piece. I know a year ago, we were having the conversation around, I believe last year, cyberbullying and all types of bullying were looped together, and we had that, this specific conversation of, you know, we want to understand where, you know, our issues with bullying are and kind of delineating that out into the different categories which we see reflected here in this survey. So I appreciate the adjustment there. Like my other colleagues, I'm also disappointed with the low family participation, but I am appreciative of all of the modes that your department went through to try to engage families, particularly around utilizing language support and reaching out to our immigrant and refugee families, you know, in specific ways to try to capture their voices. Well, I think that's so important, and so I appreciate the efforts around that. I'm also a little disappointed in our staff participation. While that's still a high percentage, I would like to see it in the 90s or close to 100%, you know, almost as an expectation, as a, you know, as a staff member that you participate in our feedback loop so that we know what we're doing. And I know some feedback I heard from staff that had a little bit of a hesitation participating is they wanted to know, is it truly anonymous? Which I tried to encourage them, it in fact is truly anonymous because I know while we want feedback, we want genuine feedback, right? We want feedback that truly reflects how our staff, how our students, how our families feel. And so I can't remember from when I filled out the survey as a staff member and then also as a, as a family member. I know there's some demographic identifiers at the beginning of the survey. I don't know, I don't recall if there's an opt-out feature for sharing some of those demographics. I know for some of our staff, they feel like their department is so small that once they go through sharing, you know, how many years of service they've been there and kind of what department they're in, and, you know, as they share those, all those demographics, they feel like it whittles it down, so it's pretty obvious who the person filling out the survey is. And so I don't know if there's an opt-out feature or if that aggregate never gets put together to be able to identify a staff member, but really communicating that to our staff, that this is not trying to be used to, like, single out somebody, it's really being used to try to get genuine feedback about what's going on in our buildings. Does that make sense at all?
Yes. And I do want to confirm that, as I mentioned earlier, we partner with Metropolitan Educational Research Consortium at VCU, so they are the ones receiving the data. We never receive data files, we receive results in aggregate form.
And I think, I appreciate that, and I think that's so important that we try to communicate with our staff and, or, excuse me, with our families and our students, but particularly with our staff, so that they feel empowered to give their genuine feedback. I've spent quite a lot of time going through this data, there's still a lot more to be gone through in terms of my individual schools and looking at macro trends across levels and across matriculation patterns. I thought particularly just the response rate within the same matriculation pattern was not necessarily consistent among schools, which I found very interesting. That's just a quirky data note there. In terms of, you know, I think as we continue to look at this, which I'm sure your department will do, looking at some of these pieces and their correlation to discipline data in terms of student feedback and how that may correlate to what discipline looks like in the building, and then also looking at some of these staff responses and how that may correlate to staff retention inside of a building, I think, you know, could be some interesting things to dive into as we, as Ms. Atkins was saying, really leverage this data, you know, we've asked for it, so let's really leverage it in a meaningful way. And then finally, I just want to shout out our superintendent and her student advisory group. I know this is one of her newer advisories, but Ms. Kinsella has been, and some other board members have been attending some of those meetings as well, and just creating opportunities to hear different stakeholder voices. I don't think the general public realizes how many advisories she has across her stakeholders. So there's elementary teacher advisory, there's secondary teacher advisory, there's principal teacher advisory, there's support staff advisory, there's student advisory, and our superintendent really is dedicated to getting genuine feedback, and like she said, vetting things through these advisories so that we can best reflect the needs of our stakeholders. So I just wanted to give a shout out there. So, Dr. Hinton, thank you to your team in diving into all this data, and I know there's much more digestion to be done by all of us over the next coming months. That's all. That's all.
Great. Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. Let me see, Dr. Hinton, I think most importantly, you know, something that you said, you talked about the reality and the perception. And, you know, what I'd really like to do is change the reality, not just the perception for our students. I mean, that's why we do what we do, and that just really struck a chord with me, right? When you, when you said it, whether it was perception or reality, well, according to the survey, it's their reality. So I'm glad to hear we're, we're looking to do some work around bullying and, and interestingly enough, respect and bullying for, for students and staff. I know Mrs. Shea spoke to, I think she mentioned discipline. I guess I'm going to come at it from right behavior. And I know Dr. Noel is going to talk about student code of conduct later. But, you know, I know fall 2021, we focused on a reset, right? Like a mental health reset when we came back in our buildings and students and staff that hadn't been in our buildings. But when I look back and I look at this survey, I feel like this year was more of a transition year. Everybody getting their sea legs back, if you will. And so that fall 2022 is more of a back-to-school. 2022, what does it look like in the fall? And then I guess I'd really like to know is, is what, what are we going to do to address some of the behavior, the harassment and the bullying? And how are we going to set the tone for safety, safety and wellness expectations in our buildings? Is it going to be? Each, each building probably will look different, but I mean, is it the principal? Is it, is it division newsletters? Is it, does it start before the start of school? I would hope so, that expectations are communicated before then. And then also, you know, we do have a student code of conduct that, and again, I know Dr. Noel is presenting later, like, how are we going to communicate? What is our plan for letting families know, hey, you know, we heard you? Families, students and staff, of course, not that many families, but hey, we heard you, we're responsive to you, this is what fall 2022 looks like. And maybe this is a Dr. Cashwell response?
Yeah. And I know Dr. Hinton would jump right in, and I saw Dr. Grant jumping up too, and I think there are a lot of members of our team who are expressly focused on exactly what you've mentioned, is making sure we're communicating clear expectations. We're working with our students and families to help them understand that and why they lead to success. So not just focusing on the punitive, but on learning and understanding why be, these behaviors matter and creating a strong and positive school environment. So there are a number of things planned that would take me longer to, than a whole presentation to share here, but we will follow up with the board. I know Dr. Grant and her team of directors, Dr. Noel and his team, and certainly our student support and wellness group have been working together on this issue. So we will certainly provide you a more detailed response about what's being planned, and of course, that continues to evolve as we're digging into this data and of course, reflecting upon this school year that has just closed and planning for the next one.
Okay. And then I know Reverend Cooper asked about this. So each school build, each building will get their data, and then they'll develop their plan and response to what their data says. But will the data itself be shared with the school community or the response plan to the data be shared with each school community? I didn't catch, I didn't catch that.
Typically the plan, the school, each school has a, a school improvement plan that doesn't just include, you know, we've got to recognize the small n in some of this data, it shouldn't be looked at alone. So we're looking at academic achievement, a number of other data sources, and then principals are working with their team and our school quality team and their directors to develop a comprehensive, continuous school improvement plan. And that plan, those goals and the related data are shared.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. And then outside of that, I just want to highlight, and since I sit on both these committees, this is, this is noted for us to continue to do our work, strategic plan awareness and policy awareness and understanding in terms of language. And in case anyone's listening, I would just say, we've been working on that, and based on the surveys, we still have more work to do. And that's all I had on this. Dr. Cashwell?
Thank you.
Sorry, my mic was off. Thank you, Dr. Hinton, again and again. We know this is one piece of the puzzle as we continue to strive towards goal attainment for those pieces outlined in Destination 2025. And of course, it's quite a bit of comprehensive work represented there, but certainly doesn't represent all of the goals we're working towards. So, but really appreciate the, the time spent on that data dive. All right. The next several items, 5.02 through 5.08, provide an opportunity for us to take another look at some proposed policy revisions, a number of which we discussed at a prior meeting and have been out for public comment. And if I might just take a moment before we dive into taking any questions board members may have, just acknowledge when it comes to certainly the policy work that's happened, I know that Sherri Gravette is not with us this afternoon, but she has been a leader in this policy work, and of course, we know that she is retiring. And so we are wishing her all the best in her retirement and want to make sure we pass on our sincere gratitude to her as well. Dr. Heather Allen is with us this afternoon, who will be taking over that role and so we can continue this very important work. And then of course, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge this entire Section 5 under Chief of Staff, the strategic plan efforts and certainly the policy and constituent relation efforts have been headed up by Dr. Beth Tigen, who will be taking the helm as superintendent in Powhatan County Public Schools. And we want to offer our sincere thanks and congratulations to you as you move on to that role. So, you know, one last job at your last meeting to come forth and answer any questions we may have related to the policy. So I will just continue through the, the list. And if you have any questions, as I said, Dr. Tigen is here to answer any you may have. And of course, we know we have board representatives from that policy committee here with us. So the first one is related to proposed revisions for policy P2-05-004, which is stakeholder participation. Any questions related to that revision? Or comments, thoughts?
Reverend Cooper?
Yeah, just a quick question. Can someone just speak briefly in regards to the signs, posters, part of that, just the logistics of the last two rows, you know, the thought process and the enforcement, if you will?
Right. And so the thought was that in the last two rows would, would prevent obstruction and distractions for others here at the meeting, but still provide that opportunity for people to express themselves through signage? And that would be something that our, you know, security staff that's here with us would help us monitor and manage.
I, I perceive that, and I wrote it down, is it distraction, safety or visibility? And I was correcting my concurrence with you, so thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
One question on that one. Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Ogburn?
The only thing I would add, Reverend Cooper, is that part, the original revision of this particular policy had, had removed the ability to have signs, but subject to our discussion at our previous meeting and based on public comment and feedback, there, there was real concern about eliminating signs altogether. So we consulted other policies in other jurisdictions and found that there is a middle ground. There is a way to allow people to express themselves without, you know, for example, sitting on the front row, obstructing the view of other people with any kind of signage. So this seemed to be a way to have both things. You know, it, I think that we can learn from our colleagues in other counties sometimes, and this was one of them, where we did exactly that.
So we came to a happy medium. I, I get it.
Yeah. Certainly, yes.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Ogburn.
Yeah. If, if I may just add on that, since I sit on the committee as well, I know we also took feedback, Ms. Atkins shared, that a lot of student voice is brought to us, and a lot of communication is also done through signage. So we wanted to find a way, not just by following what, you know, other localities are doing, but we did take that into consideration. But we considered our community and feedback from the board and other feedback we received, to your point, right? So that everyone's voices was heard, whether it was on a sign, you know, in writing, publicly, publicly commented, however people chose to communicate with us. Let me see. Ms. Atkins, do you have any questions or comments?
I do. I want to thank Mrs. Ogburn, yourself and the policy committee for considering those thoughts, particularly on behalf of our students. And, you know, students sharing their perspective along with the wisdom of adults helps us be better. And when we honor freedom of expression in different ways, we learn. And so I'm very grateful for consideration of that. I did have a question on one section, and I'll try to get to that. To ensure the school board has the opportunity to hear from as many speakers as possible, keep going, keep going, keep going. In the following situations, more than one family member is allowed to speak. If members of the same family wish to share differing views, or if a Henrico student wishes to speak in addition to his or her parent or legal guardian, will they still get two minutes? Or is that in a, in addition to the original person that submitted the request to speak?
They would be each considered their own speaker, and so they'd have their full two-minute allocation or more if the board decided, you know, as a collective to increase that time at a particular meeting.
Okay. Fantastic. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Mrs. Shea?
Thank you, Ms. Kinsella. Dr. Tigen or Dr. Cashwell, can you share? I know we got a small handful of emails pertaining to this policy before we discussed it at our last meeting, and then we posted it for further public comment. Have we gotten any other further public feedback on this policy?
We have not through the, you know, once it's posted online and, and they're asked to, if they have additional input, to put it through the HCPS policy web email account, we've actually seen, received no feedback on this policy or any of the other policies that were posted.
Thank you for that point of clarity. And then also thank you to all the members of the policy committee for really going back and digging into both the constituent feedback we got, as well as the board discussion from last time. That's, that's it for me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I guess if, if, maybe I'll just ask you, Dr. Tigen, having sat on the committee, I know that the purpose of going through this policy was to make it more clear, transparent for folks. And I know that the time limit to speak used to say not more than three minutes, and now it says two minutes. And I know the intent is for the board to hear from more, more people, students, staff, families, other stakeholders. Is there anything that I'm missing when I think of why did we settle on two minutes? Because I know having not more than three minutes was confusing when folks actually showed up. So we wanted to be very clear. But then again, we do have, the board has the opportunity to change that time limit, do they not? If you could just speak to that for a moment?
Yes. The, the policy does provide a provision for the board being able to change that time limit at a given meeting. Also, there's language in there about if speaking time runs out, whether it's two minutes or a different time allocated, that comments can be, you know, provided in written form to the clerk of the board. And so there are multiple ways. Truthfully, you're correct. It was all about how we can provide, the board can provide as many ways as possible to gather input from as many constituents as possible.
Thank you. And I guess we've heard from all of our board members. I would just like to say that approval, this, this policy will be approved at this evening's meeting. And that's all we had. Thank you, Dr. Tigen. And I guess, what are we going to do? Just go to the policy by policy, Dr. Cashwell? We have a lot of them.
We'll come back in this evening.
Yes. And I should have noted that this policy, in addition to, I think, the next, actually all of these in the list, we'll come back for, I'll be seeking your approval on those proposed revisions. And I know a number of these, we've had discussion at a prior meeting, and the, the committee's done a lot of work on already. So there may not be questions, but I'm going to go through them one by one, just in case. So the next one is related to revisions to policy P4-11, political activities would offer an opportunity for questions or comments here, seeing those revisions.
This time, I'm going to start with Ms. Ogburn.
I actually do. We got a written public comment today through the online system related to this policy. And it actually, I don't know, it makes me think a little bit, I'm, I'm wondering, Mrs. Kinsella, whether or not we need to revisit the wording of this one? Because it, it talks about using political materials as part of your curriculum. And it occurred to me that we might need to add some examples, or if, Dr. Tigen, if you could address that concern, I, I think there's been more than one comment on this particular part of that policy, the concern that that is too broadly written, that a teacher or staff, any staff member could say, well, this is somehow connected to the curriculum if we're not more specific. I'm not, I'm, I'm curious what your thoughts are.
I, I think that when we say curriculum, we know that's what we have provided. It's not, we don't provide everything, but we provide a lot of that, and it's tied to the standards. And so, you know, I think it's relatively clear that, that there's that connection of curriculum to the standards, and that's what we're referencing.
Well, and, and the, the other part of this is that I've gotten a couple of questions, actually, one of them, it was crazy, at the grocery store. I mean, because, you know, you can get those anywhere. Someone asking about, we didn't, in this policy, connect the political materials and causes, specific causes, when we addressed part of the curriculum, and wondering whether we should. Because there were several examples given to me where staff members in a variety of schools had various posters in their room or things on their front door of their classroom that were social issues. And where do those fall under this policy? And I'm wondering if, in your opinion, we have covered that to prevent it? Because that's the thing, one thing I think actually parents have expressed to me that they object to. Any kind of, it's not necessarily political, but it's a social cause. It's a, a movement or, or something like that, and they might have some signage or something like that in their classroom.
Mrs. Ogburn, if I might, and certainly your point and the feedback that was received related to this policy is, is taken and heard. I would think that the policy, as it's written, covers what the members of the policy committee, including board representatives, were intending. You know, I would remind you that regulations may allow for additional guidance outside of policy, right? So there's policy, and then there's regulation. This is something that we could dig into, the school leadership team could take a look specifically at, at what you're speaking to and determine whether a regulation might be needed. And, and Mrs. Watkins, does that seem?
Yes. I think that could be appropriate, and it would allow for the flexibility to really dig into real-life examples and kind of explore the specific types of signs that you're talking about, what type of messaging the division would like to put forward. And, and I do think that that might be an easier conversation or a more appropriate conversation perhaps for leadership to work with school leaders on.
That, that makes perfect sense to me. The, the members of the public oftentimes don't read the regulation. That's my only concern there. So I think just in our policy manual, we will have to reference that regulation so that if... that if someone does question the rules, once leadership has had a chance to work on that regulation, that it's updated quickly and we can reflect, you know, what we intend for it to be in regulation. That would be great.
And I think Ms. Gravitt has made a concerted effort to make sure that when there is a, there is a regulation related to the policy, that it's denoted on the bottom of the policy. So that there's an easy way to access that. So we'll make sure that that is the case with this as well.
If I may just interject, again, sitting on the committee, like we've done with other policies, and quite frankly, with these, is not only are we reviewing them to see, to make sure they're current and that we're in compliance, but it's also making what we're doing, putting that in policy, right? So if this perhaps is not clear, we could always revisit it, right? That's not, that's not off the table. So with that being said, thank you for your feedback, Ms. Ogborne.
Thank you.
Let's see, Ms. Atkins, any comments? No. Mrs. Shea?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Consella. I think as the conversation pointed out by Ms. Ogborne shows, there's a lot of layers to this. There's a lot of layers to this policy. And so I was just curious, and perhaps these are things that can be dealt with in regulation, but I was just curious, in the Policy Committee's discussion, was there any discussion? We have chapters of the Young Democrats and the Young Republicans in some of our schools, which are student-led groups, about how this policy may impact those groups who often have either candidates or incumbents come in and speak to their group. Would those be impacted? As well as if the committee discussed, again, we want our elected officials to be able to come, you know, support their schools at our school events and community events. But what do that look like, supporting our schools? And what looks like possibly leveraging those events for campaigning? And so we, I think we want to be, you know, if we're going to dive into this, if we're going to put a lot of specifics around it, which I'm not opposed to, I want to make sure we hit on, you know, all of the things that need to be hit on, even if it's in regulation instead of policy.
Okay, it was not discussed, but the extracurricular activities, like those clubs, are student-driven. And so that's outside of, you know, this particular concern. So they would still be able to do those, those type of activities. The student leadership of those clubs would make arrangements for individuals to come in, and they, they're the ones facilitating and driving the directions of those extracurricular activities.
Yes, I saw Dr. Cashwell kind of looking this way. I agree with you, Dr. Taggian. I do think that, you know, this policy is really specific to employees and their political activities when they're operating as employees. I think that the piece you're talking about, about our elected officials being able to support our schools and classrooms, I don't see this competing with that in the most general sense. I think it would be different if they were having like a campaign fundraiser at a, I don't know, like during a pep rally. That would be a little bit different and unlikely example. But I don't see as much of a clash here, and I think that's something that we can definitely work to get some guidance out to schools and make sure that our building principals are equipped to know and be able to say, this is appropriate, this is not. That would be my suggestion.
I appreciate that input, Ms. Watkins.
Okay, if I might just highlight that this policy, P4-11, is political activity, and it's about our employees only. So just to highlight that, not that everyone's comments and feedback weren't, aren't taken into consideration. Anyway, Roscoe, I'm sorry, Reverend Cooper, do you have anything to add?
No questions on the policy, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you so much. All right, Superintendent, next policy.
All right, next one is related to proposed new policy, which is P9-01-001, related to suspicion of fraudulent activity by a Henrico County public school employee. Any questions about the new policy?
All right, let's see, Reverend Cooper, do you have any questions?
No questions on the policy, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Ogborne, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't.
Mrs. Shea?
None.
Mrs. Atkins?
No.
And I don't either, except for to add, Reverend Cooper and I sit on the Audit Committee, and this policy was brought forward to make things consistent on the school side, as well as the general government side. So if I might just add that, and that's all the board has to say about that policy.
All right, next would provide an opportunity for any questions related to proposed revisions to policy P4-08-001, sick leave. And again, I would be asking for your approval at our monthly meeting this evening related to this, also waiving the 30-day review period. And you'll see that a number of the policies coming are related to leave and benefits, and due to the timely nature, would be seeking your approval of those revisions to align with our policies.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Let's see, Ms. Ogborne, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't.
Mrs. Shea?
No, I do not.
Reverend Cooper?
I do not.
All right, Ms. Atkins?
I did. I had one question, and it's the first sentence. Allowance of sick leave granted will be the same for employees with light contract lengths, regardless of length of prior service. Can you explain that in detail for me, please? And particularly, can you define what light contract length means?
Really, what that was doing was removing language because of the fact, changing language, because we used to differentiate and that this didn't apply to those who are on the VR, you know, that it excluded the VRS hybrid group of employees. And so, you know, now it's everyone that's on a light contract. And so with the hybrid, some, some people in the same job category or job, you know, title are on different VRS programs, depending on when they started in the VRS program. And so this is saying that it doesn't matter anymore if you're an employee within these job categories, that you get the same benefits as anyone else. So whether you're in the, you know, the hybrid or, you know, the older version of VRS that was more robust.
So does like mean same, or like means maybe?
Like means same. Like if I'm a teacher, regardless of my VRS, and I'll.
Okay, that's good, because I was really confused. To me, like meant maybe.
Maybe we need to clarify that language a little?
So right now, in a contract, if I was to come to this, if my contract is the same as someone else, then this applies. So is that what you're saying?
If you're the same, if you have the same job title, like if you're a teacher, if you're a school counselor, if you're a, you know, technology, tech three, or whatever, then it doesn't matter what your designation is in the VRS system. You're all going to be treated the same, and this policy applies for each of them the same way.
I will discuss this afterwards.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. And that's all the board has on that policy.
All right.
Ms. Consella, I'm going to ask for just a moment, that if we are supposed to waive the 30 days on this policy, and we are, and Mrs. Atkins has a concern, are we not supposed to bring this up for approval this evening?
Yes, ma'am.
Then I think honestly, my opinion would be that we need to iron this out during the work session and possibly change the wording to make it clearer, which we can do. And then what we're approving tonight has the correct wording. Am I right about that?
I would discourage a word change, but I do want to make clear any responses to questions Mrs. Atkins has. So happy to do that.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mrs. Ogborne. I think if I'm misunderstanding this, I think others may as well, particularly those who are looking to better understand. And so let me share with you what I heard, because I think I would want us to move forward to vote if we have clarification. So what I heard was like means the same. So if I am a teacher and I have someone beside me with the teacher, regardless of salary differences or other obligations in that contract, I would be treated the same based off of this.
If it's really speaking to your contract. Yes, and this is really speaking to differences that would be related to VRS or hybrid. That was the change made. And Mr. Wack, you're welcome to come forward and shed any additional light so that we're crystal clear. And I would just recall, some of that language had been pre-existing and is not a change. So go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to just chime in that like contract, like, so if I have a 209-day contract, whether I have one year of service or 20 years of service, the leave, these leave accruals are the same. So like, similar, comparable, yes.
Yes, we could use the word comparable, similar, but like is meaning same, which is what I think you wanted to confirm.
Right, I just wanted to confirm that like meant same.
Correct.
That's all. So that if there was a question, a discrepancy, that we are not saying maybe, we are not saying different. If I was to negotiate, I would not be able to based upon this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear so that I could. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. So are we clear on that policy? Can, it does not need a word change?
No, as, you know, so the understanding is that like means the same.
Right.
So I just wanted to be clear that I understood, so we're good to go.
Okay, Ms. Ogborne, how do you feel, knowing?
I'm fine with it as long as everyone thinks that there wouldn't be confusion. One of the, Ms. Consella, as you know, one of the purposes of what we're doing as a Policy Committee is to make our policies easily understood by our staff members, but also citizens who look up and take the time to, to read them and look at our policies. If Ms. Atkins feels like there's any chance that that might happen, I would, maybe we could.
I believe, oh, sorry.
But if we're okay, I'm fine with it.
I would just say that, you know, I would want to make sure we move forward with making sure that our sick leave is applied for what's intended here, regardless of, yeah, so that's like contract. However, at any point, a policy can be revisited. So this certainly is something that if we found further revision or clarification were needed in the future, that we could certainly do that. I mean, certainly, the Policy Committee could visit this at any point moving forward.
And I'm comfortable with this moving forward because I'm able to, someone was able, Dr. Taggian was able to explain it, because I think, just as your point and Ms. Ogborne's point, is to make it clear. It may be reading it for the first time, and I'm not clear. And when we ask the question, if there's a valid response that's understandable, that's fine. So I would encourage us to move forward.
Okay, well, thank you for, thank you for that. Ms. Ogborne, you're finished commenting?
I am.
Okay. Board members, any other comments on this policy? Mrs. Shea?
Sorry, I was muted. No, no more, no comments.
Okay, Reverend Cooper, you're good. Okay, Dr. Cashwell, next policy.
Yep, the next one is related to proposed revisions to policy P4-08-003, military leave and benefits. And I would just say this aligns with legislative changes that require a change here, so that it's up to date.
Okay, board members, having heard that, do we have any comments or questions? Reverend Cooper?
No, ma'am.
All right, Mrs. Shea?
None.
Mrs. Ogborne?
No.
Mrs. Atkins?
No.
And I don't have any either. Dr. Cashwell, next policy, please.
Yes, next is proposed revisions to policy P4-08-008, annual leave. And these proposed revisions align with changes made to the General County of Henrico, general government annual leave policy.
All right, board members, do we have any questions or comments? Mrs. Shea?
None.
Thank you. Mrs. Ogborne?
No.
Reverend Cooper?
None.
Mrs. Atkins?
No.
And I don't have any either. Dr. Cashwell, next policy.
Yes, final policy is, for your consideration, our proposed revisions to policy P6-02-005, absences and excuses. And would note that these revisions align with legislative changes, which allow parents to submit an absent note in their native language.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Board members, do we have any questions or comments? Reverend Cooper?
Actually, I do. So on line eight. Line eight says, seniors may receive excuse absences to visit colleges, provided that documentation of the student's participation is given to the school within two days of the absence. Since we prepare our students to either be enlisted, enrolled, or employed, could we expand this excuse absence allowance to seniors who may be scheduled for an interview, for employment during school time, or for an appointment, appointment or visit with a military recruiter?
I would say that schools already consider that going to the recruiter and so on as similar, you know, the same as a college visit. It is their post-secondary, but maybe we need some clarification there.
I'd say this is something we can revisit to add additional language, but given the legislative change and the need to enact that prior to the start of the new school year, I would suggest adopting the revised change. And since that's original language, we look at addressing that. If needed, I do know, as you pointed out, that that is a practice of schools, but to make sure there is no question, we could visit that here.
So in practice, right, which would be regulation, this would be what our buildings would follow? Okay.
We could add additional.
And we could plan on bringing something back in August before the new school year. It's adopted.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
This is adopted, then we can bring, you know, bring a change forward.
Well, I just think it's consistent with who we say we are. You know, at least, you know, to Ms. Consella's point of practice and actual application, you know, so thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. And we're looking to approve it today, not only for the start of school fall 2022, but also for summer school, right, Dr. Taggian?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for the clarity, and thank you for that comment, Reverend Cooper. Let me see, Mrs. Shea?
Thank you. I appreciate Reverend Cooper's comment there and agree to look at that, you know, but I think we can go ahead, as Dr. Cashwell said, go ahead and pass it as written this evening, so that we meet those legislative needs, and then put it on the docket for further revision as well.
Madam, Madam Shea, I'm totally in agreement with that. As long as we, you know, we put on the radar, we adopt this tonight to be in compliance, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Is that all you had, Mrs. Shea?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Ms. Ogborne?
I think that sounds like a really good plan for this policy, so I would agree with that as well.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Atkins?
No questions or comments, and I agree with moving forward.
Okay, it looks like we all agree that, so that we can be in compliance, we're going to look at approving it, we're going to approve it this evening, and then we will have it brought back to us in August for further consideration after it's been through Policy Committee. All right, thank you.
All right, that concludes items from the Chief of Staff and policy. Thank you. All right, next item from School Leadership, 6.01 is a review of the proposed revisions to the 2022-2023 Student Code of Conduct. I know we had discussion about this at a prior meeting, and I'll be seeking your approval at our monthly meeting of the proposed revisions here. Dr. Grant is joining us to provide the presentation. And you'll notice Dr. Will Noel has joined us virtually to help answer any questions that the board may have, concluding the presentation. Dr. Grant?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. As you recall, in May, we began process of considering any changes for the 2022-2023 Code of Student Conduct. The board's feedback and direction at that time was valuable in guiding us in our efforts. Updated recommendations are being presented for your consideration and approval today, and based on feedback and input from school-based administrators, students, staff, and parents. As you know, we discussed whether additional changes. As you know, we discussed whether additional changes were needed to be to the dress code. However, after careful consideration and reviewing the feedback, we found that the existing language is adequate and appropriate. The board's work on previous adopted numerous changes to the dress code last year is appreciated. Rather than making additional adjustments to the dress code, we understand we must work with administrators to ensure more consistent application of the existing Code of Student Conduct, dress code. This was clear in the feedback specifically from our students. The language in the dress code is clear. However, implementation is reported by students as not consistent across schools. Moving on to Technology and Internet section of the code, we are asking for your approval to remove the phrase "or other electronic device." HCPS only has the authority to confiscate and inspect the contents of division-issue devices on demand with or without notice. Permission from parents or guardians is needed for administrators to inspect personal devices. The final recommendation is related to transportation, specifically the door-to-door reference. Currently, it reads, additional, the Code of Student Conduct is enforceable from door to door, which means the authority of HCPS begins the moment the student leaves home until the student returns home. When this section was originally created, the intention was to address situations at or near bus stops. The code does not have door-to-door authority over student drivers or in cases where students does not go directly home from the bus stop. Therefore, the recommendation is to remove "door-to-door" from the code. Thank you for your feedback, your time and attention. Dr. Noel and I will now address any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Grant and Dr. Noel, for this presentation brought back to us this month. Board members, what questions or comments might you have? Reverend Cooper?
Madam Vice Chair, I have no comments or questions, but I just want to say thank you to Dr. Noel and to Dr. Grant for your tireless efforts in ensuring that our comments last meeting were taken into serious consideration and changes were implemented. And so I feel very confident and very comfortable going forward with this Student Code of Conduct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Mrs. Shea?
Thank you, Ms. Consella, and I appreciate the school leadership team really conferring with our, I'll say, building specialists, which would be our educators, our administrators, and our students within our buildings where this happens. And I think Ms. Consella and I have had multiple conversations along with Dr. Cashwell about how, as passionate as our students are about our dress code, many of our staff are about cell phone usage. And so looking at, you know, I know we're adapting this language to better reflect kind of, you know, legally what our limits are. But as we look at making sure that we are applying the dress code with fidelity across all of our buildings, also looking at our electronic devices and make sure that we are with fidelity, I guess, enforcing those expectations as well for our students across all of our buildings. That's all.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Ms. Atkins?
I just had one question around, I think it's Section 7, which limits software on technology. The only question is regarding printers. So for families that need to print and they have a printer and need to install software on their printer in order to print, is that possible with the changes made here or no?
I see Mr. Maddox coming forward, so that. How fortunate that we have an upcoming technology-related presentation to have our technology expert on hand for that excellent question.
Yes, ma'am, could you repeat the question one more time about the purpose?
Sure, so in Section 7, and I'll read it also so that I can hear myself say it as well. Students may connect a personal non-school district-owned device into the HCPS network for the purposes of instruction and learning. However, access to HCPS Wi-Fi and network may be limited for non-school district-owned devices. So for families with printers, oftentimes, there's software that, I believe, technology team, at least I was a recipient or a user that has a printer, and I wanted my son to print out the homework to do it, but I needed technology to assist me in helping with the software so that I could print. Is this restricted or limited because of what's now listed in Number 7 or no?
So it's the same approach. So if a student's family has a printer, they need to install the driver on the school laptop, the TST at the school can support them and will install it for them.
Okay, fantastic. So that's an exception to this rule here, then?
Yes, that's allowed.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because we have many families that they can do the work on the laptop, but like myself, sometimes want the opportunity to print it. And I want to make sure that that opportunity and possibility is still available to them. So there will be exceptions made for that, so I appreciate that.
For that, absolutely, yes.
Thank you. And the TST is the point of contact? Yes, thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for that, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Ogburn?
I didn't have any comments. I think everybody else has covered, especially agreed with what Reverend Cooper said. So I'm good to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. I think I'm just gonna highlight the fact that when I heard, when folks saw we were talking Student Code of Conduct, which is what we approve every year, right, we do this annually. So the folks I heard from weren't necessarily focused on just these changes. So what's the best way to say this? I guess just to say it, phone, cell phone usage in our, especially in our secondary buildings, meaning middle school and high school, we have a Student Code of Conduct. I know some folks reached out and said, hey, you know, Henrico schools need a policy. And my response was, well, guess what, we have a policy. We've had a policy this year with somewhat of a reset for us. What does fall 2022 look like where cell phones are concerned? Dr. Grant or Dr. Noel?
Well, I'll chime in here. I hope you guys can hear me well enough. There was no change to the 2022-23 Code of Student Conduct around cell phone use. What it currently says for middle school is that cell phones are required to be out of visible sight and silenced or in airplane mode. And we added airplane mode last year because of the COVID year. And if you have the COVID-wise app on your phone, you will get no notifications if your phone is off. So we agreed that we could leave it in airplane mode during class time, unless you've received permission from your teacher if you're using your phone for academic purposes. And it's the same for our high schools, 9 through 12. Cell phones are required to be out of visible sight and in airplane mode during instructional time, unless given permission by the teacher.
And I think I would add to Dr. Grant's comments in her presentation that, you know, what we're finding, and particularly what we've heard, both from staff on this issue and similarly from students related to the dress code, isn't necessarily that the code isn't clear and doesn't lay these rules out, but what does implementation look like? What's the fidelity of implementation and what's the consistency of that? And so I think, you know, Dr. Grant and Dr. Noel have acknowledged that moving into fall, it's about clarity around those expectations at every single building and in every single classroom. And so we have a good opportunity, as we restart every fresh school year, to be clear about that. And I know they'll be doing some training with our school administrative teams who handle implementation and enforcement of the code to really make sure they're leaning into what that consistency and clarity looks like in every building.
May I add just a thought? Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Noel, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Ms. Atkins. I'll follow up after you.
I also wanted to share that, and Dr. Tygen may want to chime in, but the School Health Advisory Board also has a digital citizenship committee. And there, over the summer, we'll be looking also at things like cell phone usage, social media, and offering the school board thoughts and opportunities to consider in those spaces. So more work is happening over the summer in our board and more to come.
Well, if I might just respond on the record so that everyone hears us, to save you, and the group from duplicating efforts Greenwood Elementary School in collaboration with Hungry Creek Middle School just did a digital awareness social media night about a month ago. And it's out on social media, actually, the presentation, but I'll be sure to share it with my colleagues. But just so that your, you know, your work is not duplicated this summer with Shad, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
All right.
What I was gonna say just a minute ago about cell phone and working with our administrators, returning this summer, we'll have our Positive School Climate Outreach. It's a two-day day of providing information for our administrators. And I know we talked about bullying earlier. And already in that, on the agenda, we will talk about what bullying is, what bullying is not, and how we're dealing with it, as well as, we're gonna add now the cell phone issues and normalizing our administrators with that. But that will be July 25th and 26th at Glen Allen High School.
Thank you so much for that, Dr. Noel. I was gonna say, if there are five things I want families to know, I definitely want them to know about the cell phone, cell phone usage, that we will be abiding by the Student Code of Conduct in the fall, right?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And then I've, I received some questions about if it's student devices on school grounds, then the standards still apply, right? In terms of usage, because I think some teachers have gotten, you know, it's my device, I can do what I want to on my device on school grounds.
If they have their device on school grounds, they're still falling under the Code of Student Conduct, and they are only allowed to use it in class unless the teacher gives them permission to do so. And if for instructional purposes, they're not supposed to use it otherwise.
Okay.
Now, it's their personal device, so just like Dr. Grant said, we want to take out other devices. We don't have the right to confiscate and go through it without their permission. But they are not allowed to use it.
Okay, thank you for the clarity on that. Board members, anyone else have anything on Student Code of Conduct? Or Student Code of Conduct changes? Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Noel, and thank you, Dr. Grant.
Thank you.
Dr. Cashwell?
All right, for the next item, you know, we have been looking through a series of presentations at high school redesign efforts. And this presentation is a follow-up to that high school redesign series. And of course, comes from specific recommendations and asks the board had for administration at a prior meeting. So I am gonna turn it over to Dr. Farrell and Liz Parker.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Chair Shea, School Board members, and Dr. Cashwell. I'm Liz Parker, Director of Student Support and Wellness and School Counseling. And with me again is Dr. Farrell, Director of High School Education. On June 24th, 2021, the school division was asked by the school board to examine class rank. Today, Dr. Farrell and I would like to provide you with a brief update on our initial examination of high school class rank and a recommendation related to class rank for the upcoming school year 2022-23, as we continue to investigate this important topic. In direct alignment with Destination 2025, academic and career planning continues to be an implementation driver for achieving academic excellence. Our presentation tonight or today addresses the careful and thoughtful academic and career planning necessary for students to successfully pursue multiple post-secondary pathways. First, we thought it would be helpful to provide a brief overview of the term "class rank." Class rank is a mathematical computation of how a student's cumulative grade point average, or GPA, compares to other students in their graduating class at their school. All students, with the exception of those placed in alternative academic environments who are pursuing a standard or an advanced studies diploma, are included in determining class rank. Students are ranked numerically in ascending order according to their GPA, so the rank of number one represents the student with the highest GPA. GPA is rounded to four decimal points in HCPS. Class rank is determined uniformly across all schools and is computed at two points throughout a student's academic career in HCPS, at the end of a student's junior year and again at the midpoint of the student's senior year. Currently, class rank appears on the HCPS high school transcript as seen here. The transcript is the only student record that lists class rank, and transcripts are uploaded to parchment transcript services at different points throughout the school year, where students can securely request transcripts be sent electronically to various destinations with parent guardian permission, including colleges, universities, employers, apprenticeship programs, et cetera. Speaking of colleges and universities, according to an analysis from the National Association for Colleges Admissions Counseling, or NACAC, fewer than half of U.S. high schools still report class rank. Furthermore, approximately 60% of admissions officers reported that class rank is of limited or no importance in admissions decisions for first-time freshmen. Similarly, listed here, you see the top 20 colleges and universities attended by HCPS students directly out of high school. Of these 20 schools, 0, 0% require class rank for admissions determinations. Instead, many cite a holistic review process that includes GPA-weighted and/or unweighted, rigor of coursework completed, student activities, recommendation letters, and essays. Inclusion of standardized test scores and admissions determinations continued to fluctuate as a result of schools adopting test optional and test-blind practices once again during the current admissions cycle. And now, Dr. Farrell will share some additional research regarding like school divisions, as well as make a recommendation for the 2022-2023 school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Parker. Additionally, a poll of 131 school divisions across the Commonwealth of Virginia showed that of the 101 school divisions that responded, approximately 20% of them do not report class rank. Against this background, we have one recommendation for the board at this time. Beginning with next year's graduating class, the class of 2023, we recommend providing the option for students to opt out of having their class rank appear on their high school transcript, similarly to how we currently provide students with the opportunity to opt out of having their SAT or ACT scores appear on their high school transcript. Under this option, all students would still be included in class rank. However, those who do not want or need to report their class rank on their transcript will have the option to opt out of having it appear. To implement this recommendation, parents or guardians of students in the graduating class of 2023 and beyond would have the opportunity to complete a request to suppress class rank from appearing on the high school transcript form, along with all back-to-school forms in eCollect in the early fall of each school year. Again, this is a similar process and timelines that is used for parents and guardians seeking to opt out of having their child's SAT or ACT scores appear on the high school transcript. We know that this option would be an important one for our students and families to think through carefully prior to requesting, and our school counseling departments are here to support any students or families considering the submission of a request to suppress their class rank from their high school transcript. Additionally, as a high school redesign team, we will continue to examine options for class rank in HCPS. This concludes our presentation on the. This concludes our presentation on the examination of high school class rank. At this time, Mrs. Parker and I will be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Dr. Farrell and Ms. Parker. All right, board members, let's start with Ms. Ogburn. Do you have any questions or comments?
The only comment I have is, is I appreciate having things aligned and clear. To me, if you give, this is another way to give students' choice over, over what's reported, and I, I think that kind of covers the basis. So I think this is a great option to present our students.
Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Thank you again, Dr. Farrell and Ms. Parker, for the presentation. Can we quickly go to Slide 8? On Slide 8, where the recommendation is mentioned to provide the option for students to opt out having class rank appear on the high school transcript, when communicating this change, to opt out of having the rank appear on their high school transcript, what would be the message shared with our students and families on the pros or cons of making this decision? I ask that question because I know that families, when they're faced with the same decision of whether to opt their student out of certain tests, they have cited in the past that they didn't feel that they had sufficient information in order to make an informed decision.
I can speak to that. We are on the request to opt-out form. We are working hard with our high school counseling directors, and will continue to do so, to draft that very carefully so that families have a real, clear understanding of potential implications of that, and have some disclaimers on there as well.
Before that's disseminated, are we able to see it so we can look at it?
Sure.
Sure. I don't see why not. Yeah.
Happy to share that with you. Yes, we're, you know, very similar, and I know you just had a high school senior come across the stage very proudly, similar to-
As you did as well.
Yeah, so we're familiar with those forms. And so when it comes to preparing for transcript time, we know that our families at all stages of the game are particularly thinking of those going into their senior year, making decisions related to, things related to their transcript, SATs, ACTs. I know our school counseling teams are ready to answer questions that families or students may have, but we want to make sure our documents give them our great resource in, in helping start that conversation. So we'll certainly provide a draft to that.
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell and Ms. Parker. Ms. Parker, could you or Dr. Farrell go back to Slide 3, please? So on Slide 3, can you give me, help me to get a better understanding of how class rank is reported for a school like mine at Henrico High School? I received a number of calls and emails from concerned parents and guardians after their awards day and commencement, and it was specifically pertaining to unfairness and their perceived mindset and confusion related to class rank. We have the IB program, the Center for Performing Arts, and the Comprehensive School. And just explain, breaking it down for me and those listening, how class rank is determined for a school like Henrico High School, where there are various programs under one school.
Sure, I can take this one. All the students in Henrico High School are included in class rank. So yes, students in CFA, the IB program, and also the Comprehensive High School. We understand that with the advanced programs, the specialty centers, you know, there are some additional opportunities for students to take, you know, a few more advanced courses than perhaps those in a comprehensive setting. And, you know, we've done some things with our push to provide more access and opportunities to advanced courses, you know, AP, IB, and also dual enrollment, to ensure that all students have, have opportunities to pursue advanced programming. So to answer your question, all students are included. And I know that, you know, some of what I have heard from parents, and you probably as well, is, you know, why all students who are, who are in advanced programs are included in class rank, along with, you know, those who are in comprehensive programs? And the reality is, in Henrico, we don't exclude anyone. You know, all students are included in that class ranking process.
If I might clarify, you were answering to Henrico High School and then saying Henrico, and what he wants to be clear on, and you said it clearly, I just want to clarify for all listening, every single high school within Henrico County Public Schools, you're looking at the totality of the school. And I think that this is why class rank, you, you asked us, rightfully so, to dig into this topic as part of our high school redesign efforts. And while we've expanded opportunities for all students to be, have more opportunity to engage in rigorous courses and AP and things that may have additional weight, you know, what we understand is, you know, as those opportunities grow and expand, you know, there, there are vast differences. And so you might have a student who has a, what would be perceived as a high GPA, a 3.9, but, you know, when you have students with 4.6 and 4.7 GPAs, where you rank in that whole class may not be what would be seen if you were just looking at that as a reflection of your ability or your standing. And I think this provides an opportunity for students to make that choice as to whether or not they would want that rank to appear, if it was not necessarily a reflection they, you know, wanted to put forward of their effort and their, their work and that, that holistic approach that, that colleges and universities and others are using when they're looking at potential candidates. They have some control in what, what goes forth and what's shown, whether it be a standardized test or, in this case, the ranking. Your GPA is still there. Your GPA is still an earned, you know, indicator of your success in class. But what this does is eliminates that ranking because of what you mentioned, some of the differences between the way programs and centers work at schools, this sort of takes some of that away.
You know, I, I think it's a, it's a persistent challenge, you know, when you talk about the pros of having three distinctively different programs at one school, but then the residual results that get disseminated to persons who may be in the comprehensive portion of the school, and then they have the CFA and IB program. And I'm sure, you know, you're shaking your head, Ms. Parker, you, you and your staff probably encountered this, and I'm sure that you all try to effectively and efficiently communicate to students and to households, the nuance of this, this diverse kind of homogenization of three programs into one. And I just, you know, around this time, that's when I really get a lot of calls, because they go to these events at the school and they see, they're excited about their child's performance, but then they get compared to others who are in these programs, and they may not have taken advantage of advanced courses, they may not have done anything other than just been a great student in this context. And then, you know, they're, they're juxtaposed, if you will, against those in those other programs. I just wonder how we can just make sure that's messaged and massaged in such a way, you know, in that question. So I guess it's ongoing.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the, the efforts are still ongoing, but I think this is one step to allow, again, the, your earned GPA to stand alone, and, and certainly that matters, rigor matters, the, the grades you've earned matter, but we want to make sure that there isn't any opportunity for that to be, your, your effort to be misconstrued in relation to something that an admissions officer may not understand in relation to the unique programming at each high school, which is in many cases why we see that universities have moved away from that entirely. So they certainly understand that is a variable at play here.
Thank you so much, Madam Superintendent.
Is that it? Reverend Cooper? All right, well, thank you. Next up, Mrs. Shay, any questions or comments? I bet you have some.
Thank you, Ms. Kinsella. Some might be surprised to find out that this is the top, outside of COVID and redistricting, this is the sole topic I have gotten the most feedback, the most unsolicited, and then after we brought it up a year ago, it became solicited, but the most unsolicited feedback from, and it's not just from families, it's also from students, and it's also from our educators in the building. And so, you know, I, I think some challenges that, to class rank the way we currently have it, is, is it often, in, in some of our schools promotes students taking five, six, seven AP classes in order to stack that GPA, as it's referred to some places. That changes the culture of a school. That changes academically what classes look like, because when you have students taking six and seven AP classes, it's hard to do all of, no matter how incredible of a student you are, it's hard to truly do all of those AP classes, you know, with the utmost fidelity. It has compounded mental health issues and stresses for our students. It's decreased the amount of elective some of our students are taking. I saw direct feedback on that from Project Maverick this past spring, from some of our fine arts students at Friedman High School, talking about how GPA and kind of how the honors classes are weighted in terms of chorus and band and theater and that sort of thing are, are decreasing the enrollment in their programs, because students would rather take a study hall, because it doesn't quote-unquote "count against" them. And then also, this, this challenge that Reverend Cooper brings up about whether perceived or actual, because I think we have people on both sides that feel like they're in the disadvantage between our specialty centers and the rest of the Comprehensive High School in terms of being ranked together. There are a lot of challenges here. And so I really appreciate the team's work diving into this, diving into this as we do a high school redesign, as we kind of relaunch a lot of our things and, and reposition ourselves after COVID. So was there any, I guess my first question is, so the way the recommendation is written, it sounds like class rank would still be default, like the default is your class rank is still calculated, and then you could opt out of that. Is that correct?
Yes.
So the opt-out is for class rank to appear on the transcript? So all students would be included in rank? And the opt-out is specific to that rank appearing on the student's transcript?
Is there, was there consideration given to the opposite of that, where the default would be to suppress the class rank, and then you could opt into having it included on your transcript?
We'll continue to look at that a number of ways. We felt, given our current processes related to SAT, ACT, some of the technological processes that are in place between our transcript process and parchment, that this was the prudent way forward, but, you know, we, we'll continue to look at that. And, you know, as you mentioned, this would still be that we're calculating that, but that, you know, where students have reported the disadvantage is in the admissions process, where it might potentially negatively reflect upon them inadvertently, where, you know, they might be a student with a higher GPA, but a lower class rank, given some of the unique programmatic situations we have. So this allows a student and parent to be in the driver's seat there. And, you know, certainly, we would continue to solicit feedback on this and watch the, the process as we would, would move forward.
Well, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate kind of, we're, we're a little bit soft stepping into this, which, which is, is quite understandable, particularly as, as many of our students that will, are already in high school and towards the upper end of high school, they had, they have chosen their classes over the last handful of years under kind of, you know, the working system and being respectful of the work that they've put into that. I just, as we move forward with this, I would really like to see the overall school culture and climate get, get, get more away from the necessity of class rank. And so as we continue to have these conversations on, on how to, you know, I, I just, I, I hope this is enough. It's, it's what I'm just going to frankly say. I hope that having the opt-out is enough to still shift that school climate and that school culture towards something that's more of a healthy balance. And then just one other thing I'll throw out as, as, as these conversations continue, because you said this will be continued work, is considering, you know, if a considerable number of students decide to opt out of class rank, perhaps honoring them with, like the Latin honor system, which many colleges do, with summa cum laude, and magna cum laude, and cum laude. That doesn't, you know, that's typically GPA cutoff, and it's not exclusive to a certain number of students, if you will, which could make it more inclusive. And then I'll also just throw out, as y'all have that conversation, looking at perhaps whether we use, whether, you know, if we were to utilize Latin honors, perhaps would weighted or unweighted GPA be used to meet those marks in order to really celebrate the accomplishment, the academic accomplishments of, of a wide range of students? So again, those are just talking points, thoughts beyond the recommendation. I don't want anybody to hear this and think, oh, my gosh, they're going off the deep end. But, you know, you know, like our policy work, or, you know, a lot of our work is ongoing work, and I'm hoping that this is the first of, you know, many iterations of revisiting this. And then the last tidbit I'll throw out is, I said that this was the topic I'd gotten the most unsolicited feedback on. All of the unsolicited feedback I've gotten, it has so far been in favor of moving away from class rank. So thank you to the team for their work on this and this recommendation.
Thank you so much, Chair Shay. Ms. Atkins, any thoughts, questions?
I have many. And I am in favor of moving away from class rank. I understand that there are many student experiences that excellent students, extraordinary students, phenomenal students that didn't make that 10 to 15%, and so they didn't get looked at by the elite colleges. And so I think that Reverend Cooper brought up a good point, Mrs. Shay as well, but I, I just want to be very clear, so if anyone is wondering what are my thoughts about it, I prefer to move away from class ranks and give students the opportunity to choose if they want it or not, and for the reasons I've just stated. Thank both of you for not only doing the research and the work, but making the recommendation, because that's a big step in moving forward and making decisions, not just based on where we are right now, but looking at colleges and being more futuristic and innovative and decision-making, not based on where we are today, but where we see education going. And so very appreciative and thank you very much for what you've done here today.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. I don't really have anything to add that my colleagues already haven't covered, except for to say that I like, it's, it's an opt-out, right? It's the student, student choice, family choice. So, so I really appreciate that, and thank you for bringing this forward. I know we've been talking about it behind the scenes for quite some time, so thank you for digging deep on it and, and being with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Cashwell.
All right, our next item, if we were following the agenda, would have been 7.01, the Equity Ambassador update. Just a reminder for those who might have tuned in later, we covered that item earlier in the agenda, so we're now moving on to our next item under Operations, which is our pupil transportation update. And Jim Ellis and Lenny Pritchard are coming forward. We're excited to hear from them. We know they have been working tirelessly all school year to make sure our students are transported safely and through a number of challenges related to staffing. But despite those challenges, they not only persevered to help us conclude the school year well, but they've made great progress towards the long-awaited GPS system to continue to enhance our efforts in transportation. So we'll get to hear an update, as well as information related to the new GBS system.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Transportation Director Jim Ellis and I are here today to bring you an end-of-the-year transportation update. As you know, we face significant obstacles this year, such as driver shortages and runs that resulted in students arriving at school after the start of the school day. We know the challenges this created for students, families, and staff. So before we get any further into this presentation, I want to again stop and say thank you to everyone for their patience and understanding as we continually address the situation and adjust it where we could. We're truly grateful. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank the entire transportation team for all of their hard work and efforts for safely transporting our students to and from school each day. These dedicated men and women rise to every occasion in service of our students. We value and appreciate them very much, and they are a true blessing to HCPS.
Since the last board update in December, we have continued our efforts to attract new transportation employees. We have held 11 monthly job fairs this school year. We have held three new drive-the-bus events, one at Hermitage High School and two at Richmond Speedway, and continued our referral bonuses, as well as our perfect attendance and safe driving bonuses. We were successful in attracting 253 candidates to visit us, and we were able to welcome 91 new drivers, 36 bus assistants, and five car van drivers. Unfortunately, throughout the year, we lost a significant number of drivers that kept us continually playing catch-up to- significant number of drivers that kept us continually playing catch up to improve our numbers and help with creating effective and efficient routes. Transportation would like to thank HCPS Communications and Human Resources for their helping at expanding our efforts to recruit new transportation employees by advertising on television, radio, and large community email blasts for the very first time. Take a look.
There are lots of reasons to drive a Henrico County school bus. Ed loves the flexibility of his schedule. Anton took advantage of the paid training. And Mary is a grandmother who just loves children. Henrico County Public Schools are now hiring part and full time bus drivers with flexible hours, a competitive starting salary, great benefits, plus the option to bring your young children on the bus with you. Apply online at henricoschools.us/careers.
We were awarded a $59,488 grant from the VDOE, and we are currently developing plans to use the money on our drivers. As mentioned earlier, we continue recruiting using our traditional new methods, understanding the need to contain, to continue to both recruit and retain staff as we are focused on both. With the help from our county partners, last year, we increased starting hourly wages, offered signing bonuses, referral bonuses, attendant bonuses, as well as staff driving bonuses to qualified drivers. Creating, creating open dialogue and elevating the voice of our valued transportation was also important. To increase opportunities for staff and drivers to provide regular and timely feedback to improve our overall communication efforts in the pupil transportation department, Kevin Roy, Lenny Pritchard, and I met with employees at all five transportation zones each month. We will continue holding these monthly zone meetings with staff and drivers in the future. A new tool that we are extremely excited to launch division wide is the bus tracking app. Since last July, we have installed over 650 new GPS units on our buses and began internally testing the parent portal applications with selected programs starting in Zone 1, then slowly spreading out to the other four zones. To date, all five zones have had the opportunity to pilot the program and the apps are now live. So with the 2223 school year, all HCPS families will be able to use two exciting new bus tracking smartphone apps, Edulog Parent Portal and Parent Portal Lite for our Fed families. These apps will empower families, improve communication, and foster efficiency. Parents, guardians, and caregivers can follow their student's bus, receive notifications when a bus enters a user defined zone, and receive important messages from HCS, HCPS Transportation. We want to stress that no bus tracking service is 100% accurate. Please don't assume that the bus isn't coming because the app didn't notify you. Students should still be at their bus stops five minutes before their scheduled pickup time. When a bus is out of service, bus substitutions are made, and this can affect the accuracy of the parent portal apps. When a bus substitution is made, the app may not provide GPS information. By law, Virginia, by Virginia school law, school buses have a safety inspection every 45 days in addition to their regularly, regular maintenance schedule. This app is free of charge to parents and guardians, caregivers, and students. In addition to displaying the location of your student's bus and sending notifications, you can also receive time sensitive messages from the HCPS Pupil Transportation Department. This could include messages such as when a different bus is in use because of scheduled maintenance on your regular bus. Security is our top priority. To see bus locations in this app, you must have specific information for your child, including the name, student ID, school, and date of birth. With the parent portal apps, we hope to improve communication and expand the information available to HCPS families. To get started with Edulog Parent Portal, parents can visit our updated transportation website for an easy instructional video to help download the process. All of us at Transportation would want to say again, thank you to our students, families, and our schools for their patience and understanding this school year. Your support is greatly appreciated. This concludes our update, and we welcome your questions.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Pritchard and Mr. Ellis for being here. And thank you on behalf of the board, I'm sure. Thank you for everything that you did to get us, to get our students to and from school this year and all of your efforts to try and fill our vacancies. Henrico Schools was not the only division in the country that was short on drivers. So just thank you on behalf of all of us for all of your efforts. Now to questions and comments from my colleagues. Let's see. Ms. Ogborne, do you have any questions or comments?
Just quickly, and again, I will echo your appreciation to these gentlemen, what's a monumental task. But you mentioned in the presentation that we hired 91 drivers. How many have we lost in the in the process of retirement, moving, whatever reason that we, how are we overall in those numbers?
We lost over about 101 full time drivers and about 34 sub drivers over that time from last July.
Okay, so hiring the 91, we're still behind the eight ball. We still have quite a need, but share that need with every other school district basically in the country, if you, if the headlines are, are to be believed. So I take it that we're still, do we, you have an accurate number at this point? Like, if everybody were to come back today, how many we would need for the fall?
We have about 88 positions still open. Eight of those are due to retirees this year. I know that several are coming back after their, I believe, 90 days that they have to be retired, but 88.
But I will also add, Ms. Ogborne, that, you know, to be hopeful, to get us back to where we were pre pandemic, we are looking at lesser numbers than 88. So, you know, we ran with vacancies back then effectively and efficiently. So I at least had to put that kind of hope on this, on this whole thing, on this whole picture.
But to the point, we are still actively recruiting. And so we know that even if we were to get to a point where we were feeling good about reaching those efficiency rates, we're still going to be looking to get staff, fully staffed with our transportation team. And you saw the commercial and lots of efforts that have gone into just that. It's an, it's an ongoing initiative.
Absolutely. Well, and that was going to be my one other comment was, I really appreciate the ingenuity that you're using to connect to the public, to try and get the word out, and to try and recruit. It is, like I said, we are competing again with every other school system, which is a, it's a large task for all of us, but appreciate your, your work here. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. Mrs. Shay.
I just echo the appreciation of all of my colleagues. I have appreciated the many different ways y'all have tried to recruit drivers, including the, the TV commercial. And I think a really important piece of information, y'all, including the TV commercial, is that drivers with young children can bring them on the bus with them. I'm sure there's a better legal way to phrase that, but they can bring their children with them on the bus when they're driving. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
And, you know, I think, you know, as a mom of, of young kids who are now in elementary school, but thinking back not too long ago before they were, you know, for a lot of our families, having that childcare piece while working is a challenge. And so thank you for all the creative ways to try to fill those gaps. I'll just ask one quick question. How imperative is it for our families to fill out the transportation survey for next year if they have not done so already?
It's very important. Number one, I think we were about, last year, we had about 70% participate, or should I say return, response returns. And it's a little higher this year. Granted, a lot of people will put yes to drive, riding a school bus when it's, sometimes it's in special needs that they will use that bus. So we still have to work on that. But with, with improving our parent app and other things that are coming down the line with, with a bus ridership also in this piece is ridership response as well, so that we'll be able to track students when they get on the bus and get off the bus as well. And we did pilot that at Pemberton with Mr. Koontz's help and the kids on bus eight that I drove this summer, this, this past year as well. So we certainly did a good job of that. And those students, we had 30 kids on that bus that had, had their bus tags and they all kept all 30 tags returned to us. So it's not that they can't keep up with them. That bus did. So I don't see why everyone else, we move it on.
And Mr. Ellis, did you just say you drove a bus?
Yes, I was going to say, since he mentioned it, and he's very humble, but Mr. Ellis was a driver for Pemberton this year and got to see not only this pilot firsthand, but, you know, pitched in to help with the challenge there. And I know the students on his bus enjoyed having him as their driver. But, you know, he brings-
I never let them know that I was the director, but they just thought I was another driver. It showed up every day.
Well, this team truly does it all. And so I know you all expressed gratitude and appreciation, but, you know, I think that's another example of just the incredible commitment this team put forward. And while we know some of the user end challenges and bumps and frustrations, it was not, you know, there was no lack of effort, energy, or thought put into how we could solve these challenges for our families.
Well, I think that's just tremendous. Mr. Ellis, your, your role this year was already a lot extra to carry, trying to troubleshoot some of these issues. And the fact that you not only did your assigned role above and beyond to solve these solutions, but also jumped in to drive a bus. I mean, it's just extraordinary. Thank you so much. That's all from me.
Thank you, Mrs. Shay. If I just might, Mr. Ellis, you're not the only one as a supervisor who jumps in and drives a bus, right?
Right. We have the zone staff, they as well jump in as well.
I just wanted to recognize-
We have everybody that did-
That's right. County government volunteers, we had general government volunteers who had CDL licenses to do other types of work, come and step forward to get the additional certifications to drive buses. So it was truly an all hands on deck, incredible effort by many.
Correct.
Thank you so much.
So can I add, when people are burning up the phones to the transportation zones, it's a reason why they don't, it's a reason why they don't get answered immediately is because they're outriding, driving the bus, so.
Yes, thank you for adding that, that sometimes our phones aren't answered. But now we're going to have an app. Our phones aren't answered because our supervisors are out actually driving the buses.
Correct. And one more thing with that, we also have on the website, a new type of communication to take issues and things like that nature. So you can sign up online. That way we can track your issue as opposed to if you left a message and you don't know who you talked to or whatever, we can now track all those issues that they can refer back to when we do not get them timely answered. But we certainly will do our, you know, our best to make sure that we address all the issues. But it's a lot easier to maintain going through that system as, as opposed to individually emailing the zone supervisors and things like that.
Wow, that's amazing. Thank you for, thank you for sharing that. Let's see. Ms. Atkins, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions, just comment and saying thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Reverend Cooper.
Thank, thank you so much, Vice Chair, Mrs. Shay. So thank you, Mr. Pritchard and Mr. Ellis, again, for this presentation. And I just want to let you all know, as a parent, I appreciate the consistent communication that I receive, particularly if my child's bus is going to be late. And I want to put a plug in for my son's bus driver, man. She's, she's on it. And, you know, she's on time, she's consistent, and it's been a very pleasurable experience for me as a parent as far as my child's transportation. Very excited about Eudalogue, looking forward to the application, the parent app being utilized. And also, I just want to give you a plug, not just for last school year, but this school year, because just yesterday, I received communication asking me, was my son going to opt in? Because you all are trying to get bus routes already. So I mean, literally, I just received that yesterday. So again- And they will, they will continue to get those until they answer, until this end of July. So we certainly put that out every week for those that don't respond.
School ends one week, next week, hey, is your kid riding the bus? I mean, I mean, because it just says that we are being proactive, we're being very intentional, we're trying to do everything we can to mitigate any circumstance that might prevent our ability to do those jobs. So thank you again, and look forward to the great work your kid doing.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. I think I'm going to start off with just asking an easy question. If I don't want to use another app, do I have to use the app to get the information in the fall about my child's bus?
No, you can still, you'll still be able to get, receive that information in Power School. It's just that if, if being, you know, proactive, if we're, if you have it on your phone, you'll get an alert when the bus is in your area. So if you're running late or whatever, you know that that bus is coming. And, but so you won't get that in Power School if you, if you're not signed up to it, but-
So if I currently get the text, if I currently get the text, will those go away?
It does not, it does not change anything that's currently happening. It's an additional feature. So we have heard, you know, families wanting to have more access to information related to their child's bus. So this does that. But it certainly, if what's happening now works well for you, knowing which bus your child's assigned to and so on and so forth, that's certainly fine. But for those who would wish to have that increased ability to have information, such as the bus's location, you know, additional notifications when it's coming into the neighborhood and so on, this is an additional tool.
Well, thank you so much for the additional clarity around that. I know that the app is in response to the direction we were going, but so many parents during the past year, I believe, gave us a lot of feedback.
Right. And with, with that, if, if, when, while we're doing a numerous amount of substitutions daily with the shortage and buses being down and things like that, it certainly helps the schools when they know what bus is substituting for what bus. And the parent will also know when a bus is coming, that, oh, I know that my bus, the new bus that I'm looking for is bus nine instead of bus 10, bring my student home.
Okay, so it's going to be more up to date, it's going to be current, more up to date? Okay.
We are doing our best.
And then there's the money. There's $59,488. What is that going to be spent on? Because that's not a whole lot when you're thinking about how many buses we have and how many drivers we have.
That was additional grant money that we applied for and were successful and certainly does not represent the, the number that's been put into increasing salaries. By the way, the referral bonus program's still going for current employees who want to refer someone to be a driver, if they become a driver, you have a referral bonus coming your way. But this is specific grant monies for the recruitment and retention of. And so there are specific use cases by the Virginia Department of Education for how the money can be leveraged. And so, you know, when you see things like advertisements and other initiatives, you know, we're applying those grant monies in that way and also looking at how it can be applied to individual drivers on top of the monetary things we've put in place already.
Okay, thank you. Typically, when I see the word grant and I hear the word VDOE, together, I know that there are limitations on how funds may be used. So thank you-
Yep, that's right.
-for the clarity around that. And then, okay, so I don't mean to say, well, what if we can't hire all the drivers that we need, but someone in the room needs to say it. So what if perhaps we, we can't hire all the drivers we need for fall 2022, knowing, especially at the secondary level, middle school, high school, the impact that it had on the instructional day, right? What is our plan if in fact we might not have enough drivers? Would we change the instructional day? I don't know. What is our plan? Just in case. I mean, I know it's only June.
Yes. And we're hopeful that we're going to not be in that sort of a position. But certainly, the transportation team has been looking at any and every scenario. And of course, we took a certain approach this year and, you know, we learned from that. And in a number of cases, we had some routes that were picking students up after the instructional day began. We would not take that approach next year at any cost. I think, you know, it might be students arriving earlier to school before the instructional day, but we certainly want to make sure we're preserving that instructional day. And if we get into a scenario, we might need to make some adjustments to master schedules or start times and end times, we would communicate those to- or start times and end times, we would communicate those to families well in advance. But I feel like we're making good headway towards some solutions there.
Okay, so is summer work, because work does happen in schools over the summer. So as secondary principals are making their master schedules, are they planning, thinking that we're going to have the transportation that we need for the fall?
We don't anticipate there being any need to adjust master schedule on a whole scale. Now, we know the way many of our schools' schedule in regards to when they plan advisory or some of those non-academic blocks. And so the transportation team's working with the school team, and hopefully, we can make adjustments around the way things are currently designed. But they're certainly looking at every angle.
Okay, then, and then lastly, what is the plan? I know as I said, in a lot of the carpool lines this year, I just saw so many, so many empty buses, like a lot of empty buses, a lot of full buses as well. But people who maybe opted in as a backup, for example, and never used the backup, such that we only had maybe, I don't know, 10 kids or less on a lot of the buses that I saw. So what perhaps is our strategy? I know you've already sent out this survey, because I filled it out for my kids. But is there any, like, what is our follow-up there to ensure that we don't have empty buses?
Well, if you, the first week of school is the first week of school. Even under normal circumstances, transportation is a challenge. And then throughout the course of the month of September, transportation did a nice job of just working things and teasing things out to the point where we were able to eliminate all triple runs, reduce the number of double runs. And part of that is, you know, we will continue to beg, make sure you fill out the ridership. If you plan to, if you don't plan to use it, please be honest and help us out, because that's a stop that they're making that they don't have to make anymore. So they could also, if we're able to reduce our time and get more time that way about not making extra stops, we could pick up more students, which would eliminate a bus here and there. And I know that's part of what using and expanding, getting, adding time to one part and expanding time in an additional part of the day for scheduling purposes per se, it's the same concept. But if we can get true ridership numbers, it would help with that regard. So, I mean, we will continue to beg, and then I know that we'll have to have a discussion in September. How many times have you gone to this stop and you've not picked up a student? Then we can bump that stop off and then continue on. So that also increases our effectiveness and efficiency as well.
Great, thank you. I mean, I know, I know the answer to what you guys might do, but for anyone who might be listening, I wanted them to have the answer. And once again, thank you so much, Mr. Pritchard and Mr. Ellis and your entire team and every single bus driver that works for Henrico County Public Schools. Thank you for all you did this past year, and thank you for all that you're going to do for us, hopefully, in fall 2022 and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you. All right, our next item is an update of Securely, which some may know as our web content filtering system and student safety platforms, a new addition coming forward related to Securely. And I think maybe there's a theme in some of these presentations when it comes to increased parent-family options for involvement, whether it's with the way transcripts are handled, the bus GPS app, and now when it comes to the student's HCPS device, this is another way parents or guardians may choose to engage based on some, a new product. So I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Dalton.
Good afternoon, members of the board and Dr. Cashwell. My name's Margaret Dalton. I'm one of the IT managers in the Department of Technology. I'd like to share with you today an update and reintroduce to Henrico County Public Schools new content filter, Securely. Securely is the content filter solution selected by leadership for the coming school year. Why Securely? Well, it is one of the leading cloud-based web filters designed specifically for schools and their unique learning and safety requirements. It is a proved platform already in use for numerous school districts across the United States and protecting more than 10 million students. Part of the Securely platform is a parent portal, otherwise known as the Home App. This allows real-time viewing of activity for the parent or guardian's students, plus a few other controls within the app. Henrico County Public Schools Technology Department pulls parental and guardian data from Power School registration to match those contacts with the students. Uploading this information to Securely automatically generates a welcome email from the Securely system directly to the email account of the parent and guardian that's on record in Power As you can see, the Home App is fairly straightforward to use. Of the 770 parents sent a welcome email from the field testing schools, 155 have activated their access. As mentioned earlier, these parents and guardians will have access to the Home App, but also weekly reports sent to the email of record, which they can opt out of receiving. The field testing sites began in April, and it covered 1,002 students and 45 staff. 438 Ridge students, 178 Holman students, 139 students from Brooklyn, and 30 students from Deep Run, with 19 from Henrico. Initial feedback from staff shows that the experience with Securely is similar to the current filtering resource, iBoss. We noted that the neutrality feedback of 66% for this category, it's a positive because that lets us know that there was no noticeable difference during the transition to Securely. The neutrality of 55% plus with the 40% agreeance in this initial feedback from the pilot results again shows that staff and students' experience with Securely is on par to the current filtering resource. Technology did have an opportunity to speak directly with Ridge's principal and the ILC last, a couple weeks ago, not last week, a couple weeks ago, about their feedback and their experience, and they shared appreciation for how smooth and transparent the transition had been for their staff and students. So Securely also maintains an extensive online learning hub for all users, not just technical staff, but also teachers, administration, and parents. When requested, Securely offers specialized sessions for school administration, leadership, and school PTA nights for parents to go over the Securely app. And I wanted to, I mentioned this, I wanted to bring this up really quick, finally, and it's not related to Securely at all, but along the same path of parent and guardian insight, technology is partnering with library services as they continue to explore the abilities of the Cersei platform to provide a higher real-time visibility into books checked out by HCPS students. And any questions?
Thank you so much, Ms. Dalton.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Board members, let's see, who has questions and comments? Let's start with Ms. Ogburn.
I am, I just wish this had been around when my kids were in school. I do. I think this empowers a parent if they want to, gives them options and choice to do, to follow what their kids are doing and to hold their kids accountable and responsible. But again, it's a parent's choice. And I, as always, I appreciate the idea of piloting this and trying it out so we can get the bugs out before we go the rest of the county. But I think this is a great idea. Thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. Reverend Cooper.
Well, just two quick questions. I know, I noted that you mentioned that the lack of a portal for parents review student on activities played a major role for moving from iBoss to Securely. Were there any other mitigating factors that caused us to switch platforms?
The biggest, it's my understanding that the biggest need or the biggest ask was the parent, to allow the parent the interaction, to know what's happening on their devices. One of the things, and I, sorry, I tend to overshare, but one of the things that it's on the parent portal is it allows them to schedule offline time. So on their device that is issued from us, the Securely app, they can schedule like bedtime, they can schedule offline time to hopefully make the student put the device down.
Ms. Dalton hit the nail on the head with the change in product. So while the filtering capabilities were initially similar, it's the increased availability of the Securely product to have the parent's component added.
Right.
No, I mean, it's major. I mean, it's truly major, you know. My son calls me an operative, I'm an op. He says I'm always spying on him, and I am, because I'm trying to monitor his content, number of blue light time he has, the whole nine, so it's imperative. So I'm for that 100%. Last question. So on slide three, it says, parents, guardians can stay informed using the app on iOS or Android. If a parent or guardian doesn't have access to a smartphone or smart device, are they able to access this information, let's say if they're using a public computer or one of our libraries?
So Securely does have a website that you can go to, and I asked that same question. And actually, Mr. Maddox also asked them to. And they are eventually going to phase that out because they would like everybody to be using the app. I'm not, they didn't really share with us the reasoning behind it, but I did bring that up to them. I was like, well, not everybody has a phone. Some people are not comfortable on a phone, and they said, well, it's up for now, and we can provide the website, but it, you know, they couldn't tell us when it was going, when it was going to go away.
And we can certainly let our partner vendor know of our desire to keep that. And I'm sure, you know, the company tracks use from the site versus from the app. And so, you know, that's something we'll continue to look at.
I appreciate it, because you believe not everybody doesn't have that.
Right.
So thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Shea.
Thank you. I'm excited about the, this increased ability for our parents who choose to do so, to be able to see what their students are viewing on their devices. We are, just to share a little personally, we are a very limited screen time household, limited devices household. And, but part of my job as a parent is to teach my kids how to use devices appropriately. And so by being able to now, I'll be able to monitor, you know, what they're using their devices for, that helps me from a parenting standpoint, not only to see, you know, what they're accessing, but also use it as a learning opportunity to grow that digital literacy for our next generation. So, you know, thank you to our technology team and continuing to look at next steps on how we can all partner together to give our students the best foundation possible. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Ms. Atkins.
Well, thank you for this. I know several families that I've had conversations with want to be a bigger part of the digital experience. And so this is another way for parents to learn. It's also innovative. Instead of waiting, we are being more futuristic and trying to find ways that we bring parents into the student's experience. And that's a big piece that I think over the past two years, that there was a gap in adults trying to learn the student digital experience, because it's very different from the adult digital experience. And I think families are going to learn a lot more about their children's behavior and their understanding of digital citizenship. So I see you nodding your head. I won't go deeper into that, but very grateful for your presentation and look forward to learning more. I think that app will continue to evolve for sure, because they won't have a choice. So thank you so much for being here and sharing this presentation, and thank you to the team as well.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Yes, okay, so I love the fact that it was piloted at elementary school, middle school, and high school. So all of our parents will have access to what their children are doing, yes?
Yes.
That's amazing. And as a, as a mom of, as a board member, I love this, because I know it, a lot of our families, and myself included, I want to know how much, how much and what my kids are doing on school, at school, on their laptops. You know, I know that's a, it's feedback we've received quite a bit of since I've started serving on the board. So I'm fascinated to understand how much, what are we doing, where are we going on our laptops? So, so thank you very much. I can't wait for this app. Thank you very much, Ms. Dalton. Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you to Margaret Dalton and the entire team that worked on this, not only through the pilot, but the selection of the product and working out the kinks. We look forward to rolling it out and learning from the experience as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next two items, last but not least, and I know we've had a number of guests in our audience patiently waiting to come forward for the next two items, which offer us an opportunity to have an overview of the schematic designs, first for the renovation of Adams Elementary School, and then the next item will be related to the renovation project for the Virginia Randolph campus. So Susan Moore has come forward, and I know she'll introduce our guests, and we look forward to seeing the designs and hearing from the team.
Madam Summerton, real quick, point of order, can we just wait one second before she starts speaking? I think the vice chair is consulting with attorney.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Take a break if I could, too. Okay, all right, that's all right, no problem. So we're going to start the presentation. I may need to pause you at one point. We'll take a break, a brief recess, and then we'll be able to continue. So again, thank you, Susan Moore, a guest for Mosley Architects. We're going to go ahead and kick off that presentation.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. We very excitedly come to you today to give you the schematic design presentation. We'll be seeking your approval on that for the renovation of Adams Elementary School. This is the last project on our 2016 bond referendum list of projects. Best for last, we'll say. And we went through our procurement process for our architect. We were fortunate enough to acquire Mosley Architects. We have Stephen Halsey and Andrew Smolak behind here, behind me, and they're going to give the presentation and just give you a brief overview of what we did and where we have landed on the renovation design. And then we'll give you an opportunity to answer questions, and then we'll move into the next project.
Thank you, Susan. Members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, thanks again for having us here tonight, this afternoon, and we certainly appreciate the opportunity again to partner with you all on this exciting project. Just a quick agenda, I would like to say we've got another member from our team member, team from, that's working on Adams, and this is Jennifer Cott's in the back, she can wave. She's been working with Chris Brown, our mom, our project manager, the last few months on this project, so wanted to welcome her. Just a quick agenda, we'll go through quickly the process that's gotten us here to date, go through the schematic design, site plan and floor plans, and then talk briefly about the next steps. Just in terms of the process, we like to look at the site, obviously, and look at ways that we can improve that. This is some of the interview materials we prepared, just talking about some of the site context, acreage of the site, some of the boundaries we have to deal with, a very compact site, and some fixed site features that we need to remain in place. We like to look at ways, too, knowing this is going to be a phased occupied renovation, just some quick analysis that we did about perhaps using some of the asphalt in the rear of the site for temporary classrooms as we've moved students and faculty and staff throughout the building during the renovation process, looking for alternate ways to get in and out of the building when we start looking at temporary administration functions. As you know, one of the main features of this project is to start to relocate the front door, to get that front door, provide the school identifiable main entry, also get the main entry there on the edge, so there can be some passive supervision from the administration area. The administration at Adams right now is in board of the school, so we're trying to improve the safety protocol as you get into the school. So some of those areas that we're looking at are in those two smaller rectangle areas. We began with engaging the faculty with a series of design workshops there at Adams. We had a couple of tabletop desktop charrette sessions with faculty where we solicited some feedback and some input about what was working at Adams, what we really wanted to focus on improving at Adams, what wasn't working for them. on improving at Adams, what wasn't working for them. And also looked at really two main chunks of space. One was, again, identifying a location for a new front door and new main entry. And then once the administration is relocated elsewhere on the property, what might backfill that existing administration space within the building? And some opportunities, some of the most important feedback we, we received from the faculty was, can we find ways to improve that multipurpose space to make that larger perhaps, and also to improve the media center library function as well? So had a number of tabletop workshops and follow-ups over the past few months for the One thing where they were trying to accomplish with the site plan is to improve some site circulation. So this is where we are in terms of the schematic plan. I'm not sure if my, the mouse, it does work. Great. So to kind of relieve some parking in the, in that, I guess, the site west of the site, providing some additional entry points into that site to expand the queuing area, to try and relieve the neighborhood of some of the congestion during drop off and pickup times. So add, looking at adding an additional entry point to bring parents through the site and to have them queue throughout the site and a longer way again to relieve some of the congestion on site. And also provide an additional area for visitor parking and staff parking within the bus loop, again, just to provide some additional relief for parking. Couple of features there on the roof plan that you can see here, too, is looking at, and we'll have some plans here in just a moment to look at these areas, locating the new administration area here on the west side of the site. So it's an obvious place where staff and visitors and parents can come into the building. And then looking at providing some, a little bit of additional height in the media center and also the multipurpose room to make those a little more inviting spaces and a little more functional spaces. This is the existing floor plan. Again, you can see here, the entry point into the building again is a considerable distance away from where staff and visitors and parents park. And also the location of the administration, which is there well in board of the building. And then having some competing entrances here on either side of the multipurpose room. Those are some of the things that we're trying to accomplish and improve with the schematic floor plan. So where we are with the plan right now, again, you can see the new administration area, taking a couple of classrooms, adding some additional square footage to make this a much more inviting space, providing that, the new entry there on an edge so they can have, so those in the main office can have a good visibility for those who are coming into the building there on that edge. And also locates the new administration with a much closer proximity to where parking is going to be located. Again, providing now two main entry points off the bus loop where there's really just one now where it's competing against an entry into the front door. Relocating some storage functions in board of the building, so freeing up those two perimeter storage areas for some additional activity space within that multipurpose room. And you can see here, too, a complete reconfiguration of the internal part of the building. So we're cleaning up circulation paths, so they're really just two main circulation paths within the building. And then activating the interior of the building with an art room, having a relationship with a new library space across the way. So really providing a much more open, inviting, a much more 21st century kind of learning spaces and really turning where the media center library is now and the administration into really a vibrant, open space for students and teachers to engage each other. Just initial images of what the front door might be, using some additional and different materials at the front door. So there's an identifiable front door, so it's set off a little bit differently from the, from the balance of the school. And then using some of those additional materials with some of these additional volume spaces that we're proposing to add above the multipurpose space, again, to have that much more usable as an activity space. And then above the library in that center part of the building, it's kind of the new heart of the building, providing some spaces where we can introduce some northern facing windows and having some really nice diffused natural light into those, into those spaces. For next steps, again, we're asking for approval of schematic design tonight. And we'll go into user meetings with faculty and staff in July, looking to complete construction documents in the fall, receive bids later this year, begin construction in the first part of '23, and then complete the project around the fall of '24. Time to take any questions now on Adams.
All right. Well, thank you so much for that presentation. Let's start with Reverend Cooper.
Well, I feel like today is Christmas. For me personally, I'm, I'm not going to say I'm a child, you know, running downstairs over my gifts, but when it comes to Adams, I feel like it's a gift. Ms. Moore, as you alluded to, the last project on the bond, long time coming. I know it's Christmas for all of us with Randolph as well as Adams. I know that Principal Lowery, staff, and the community are excited about the renovations and additions to Adams. I want to say that as a community. I know that concerns regarding our spaces for loading and unloading my buses as it relates to safety and efficiency have been taken into consideration. Natural lighting for the interior spaces and also lighting for parking lot, too, to address safety and security concerns. So I'm really excited about that as well. I just want to ask about timelines, Susan. So the project, the project is expected to be completed by fall 2024. Can you share with me how we're going to minimize the disruption to students during this process?
So that is where those, we're looking at that asphalt area in the back that we would place temporary classrooms. So as part of our process right now, we're looking at how we can phase the renovation of the school, what areas have to be completed over the summer versus what areas we can move kids into the temporary classrooms and give the contractor the remaining part of the building. And we do that along with the school staff and talk to them about, this is what we want to do. These are the areas we want to move. We look at the circulation pattern, so we're not cutting off circulation points, we're not cutting off egress, and we're not crossing construction with kids. We keep them separated in the process. So that's all part of our design process right now is hammering out those details that we do cause the least disruption. I, I want to be realistic and say I, we can't renovate a school without a little bit of disruption to the process, but we do look to minimize it as much as we possibly can.
No, no, I appreciate that. It's just, I mean, for those listening and watching, that we are very conscientious of that, and we work very hard to ensure the minimal disruption.
Yes, ma'am.
So that being stated as well, excuse me, when, when are we expecting to begin? If it's, if it's '24, when do we expect to begin? Just hypothetically, and you probably can't tell me, you know, the process.
Receiving bids later in the year, depending on how the contract process goes, we would be looking to start in that either late part of this year or the beginning part of next year. So we would be looking at that December, January. The nice thing with this project is a lot of this project is in board of the school. So it's not as weather dependent as some of our other larger projects that we have done here recently. So that does give us the ability to start mid-year and not have to wait until we have better weather or that kind of thing. We, we can start that a winter with this project.
Thank you, madam. Madam Vice Chair, I'm there.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Ogburn, do you have any questions or comments?
Just a real quick comment that, Susan, your team is so great at accommodating students. When we went through this at Tuckahoe Middle School, I mean, I know that, that it is difficult for teachers and students while this is going on, but rest assured, Reverend Cooper, they are in great hands with Mrs. Moore and her team with, school does go on and it'll be done before they know it. And I know you're excited. I was so thrilled with both of these projects to see the input from staff and the, you know, sitting down, doing the schematic designs and giving ideas of how to improve the learning environment is such an important part of this. I was part of that at Tucker and Tuckahoe Middle, and, you know, that, that is just an invaluable asset for the planning process and where I think it will be again. And I look forward to this when we get to do it at Jackson Davis. So I'm a little jealous. But anyway, great, great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. Mrs. Shea.
Thanks. I think these plans look great. I love how you brought the office space out to that kind of corner bump out. It reminds me a little bit of the Pemberton project that was also from the 2016 bond. And I can say, you know, that project, moving the office there has really, really improved the security of the school. And so I look forward to Adams having that same benefit. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Mrs. Atkins.
Thank you for sharing the plans, and I look forward to learning more about the progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. If I may just highlight how much I love the natural light, whether it's in the gymnasium, just because of the age of some of our schools, right? How much natural light can do even on a rainy day, how it boosts the mood and mental health of everyone in the building. So thank you for just adding windows or natural light anywhere you can. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And if I may, I was remiss. We have our capital project manager, Aaron Brooks, in the back of the room. He will be working closely with Mosley as well as the school to make sure this project, project is a success.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Moore, for this, for this presentation and Mosley Architects for the work you've done and will do, right, on this project for us. At this, at this time, would the board like to have a recess, I believe? Or are we going to go right through or?
Yes, if we could go ahead and move to a recess, that would be great.
Okay, the board is going to take a recess and we'll convene. What do we say there? What do we think? Six o'clock?
Do six o'clock, please.
And we'll reconvene at six o'clock. Thank you so much. All right. Welcome back to the June 23rd, 2022. Yes, it is still the work session that started at noon. Thank you for letting us take a brief, brief recess. And now I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you, Mrs. Kinsella. Members of the board, the final item I have for your consideration is item 8.04, which is a review of the schematic design for the replacement and renovation project of the Virginia Randolph campus. And we welcome back to the podium Susan Moore, our guest for Mosley. We look forward to the overview and of course, we'll provide an opportunity for board members to ask any questions.
Thank you very much. Good evening to our board members, Dr. Cashwell. Once again, we are very excited to come and bring another schematic design before the board. We will be looking for board approval on that design tonight. This is for the combination replacement and renovation of the Virginia Randolph campus. We will be tearing down the majority of the campus style buildings on that site. Our architects will go over that in just a minute. And the original, not the original, but the youngest, not the oldest, or excuse me, the oldest of the buildings, Building B, which is the older building with the auditorium, will remain in place, and they will tie in the new architecture to that building. This project was funded by our ESER III funding with some additional funding coming in our 2223 CIP fund. So I just wanted to remind everybody of that. We're just a hair under $55 million for our total project funding on this. Once again, Mosley Architects was successful in our RFP process to be our design team for this project, and we are very excited to continue with this. So I'm going to turn it over to them and let them explain what we've been doing there.
Thank you, Susan, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. Good to be back again. I'm going to let Andrew Smolak, our project manager, walk you through most of the project. I just want to say, on behalf of Mosley Architects, we really appreciate always working with you all, but on this project especially, because of the mission of the school, the students and the families that it's going to touch, we're especially appreciative of being involved with this project. I'll go through the quick agenda. Andrew's going to walk you through the process to date. We've had an extremely robust stakeholder engagement process that Andrew will walk you through. We'll go through site plans, floor plans, some initial building massing and next steps. And with that, I'll let Andrew walk you through what we've been doing for the last three or four months.
So I'm going to walk you through the process. Before we started our design meetings with the local community and, and staff of the school, we wanted to understand the history of Virginia Randolph and how it's kind of evolved from that one room schoolhouse that she built adjacent off Mountain Road to what it is today, and really understand the buildings that are there and how we can make some connections to her vast history at Henrico County. And then also try to see how we can take that history and tie it into the current curriculum on campus. We also wanted to evaluate the outdoor spaces and what, if anything, could be preserved and is used on a daily basis to make sure that we don't take away anything from the site. We also looked at how to safely and easily access the site and if there's a way to consolidate some of the entrances, as well as look at the overall campus as a whole for opportunities for outdoor learning as well as outdoor activities. And we also wanted to look at how we can create swing space because as Susan mentioned, we are demolishing, demolishing a lot of the buildings on campus. As you see in the blue and the light blue on the screen, those are all of the buildings that will be removed from the campus. And we are also looking at some additional swing space where some of those could remain during construction in order to alleviate onsite temporary classrooms. And we'll be kind of evaluating this as we go through the design for our phasing as well. So our first design workshop, we invited staff members as well as community members. I think we had a few students at a few of, of the design workshops, which was great to hear their feedback as well. We posed several questions to the members of the, of our workshop to find out kind of the school identity, as well as the types of activities that happen on campus, as well as the expectations for the school, and as, as well as from the staff expectations and community expectations of what the school wants to become and what it will be. We took those, those questions and we, we asked the community members to pose which, where were the most important to them? And so you'll see here on the right, they selected a bunch of the, the words and we crafted them into a mission statement. Okay. And what I'll go ahead and do, I'll just read that briefly to you because I think it's a really powerful statement. "The campus of Virginia Randolph embodies the legacy of a woman who preserved and overcame many obstacles. We strive to create a welcoming and helpful place of safety and learning focusing on student and family outcomes while providing resources for that community. With access to social, emotional, and educational experts and using evidence-based learning opportunities designed for self-regulation and growth, our students are being prepared to reach for success, not just in school but in life after." And we use this mission statement to basically look back during our design process. We keep this as kind of a, a representation of what we're striving through with the new design of the school. So then we broke into small groups, and each was led by an architect in our office. And we went through and we actually started moving around puzzle pieces that were all the parts and pieces of the, the new program for the school. We talked about site relationships, where the new front door was going to be and how the people within the group thought the school should be designed. So these were the five design concepts that we ended up with after that first design workshop. As you'll see, there are some that are two-story options, some that are one-story options, but they're all very different. And at the end of the day, this allowed us to have kind of a roadmap forward through our design workshop process. For the second design workshop, what I did is I took those, those five design options and I made them viable floor and site plans based on all the conversations we had for the first design workshop. And we ended up with these, these five site concepts. And one of, some of the consensus that we got back from the design workshop group after we presented this to them is to have only two main entrances onto the site. We also talked about two different types of Boulevard bus loop versus conventional bus loops, and we kind of ended up going towards the conventional bus loop route. We also talked about an identifiable entrances to not only the new building, but also the existing CTE building onsite. So not connecting the two buildings together, we realized that we want to have an identifiable new front door with visitor parking and, and an easy access to those buildings. And then we also discussed internally versus externally focused outdoor spaces. And we landed on having more internally focused spaces or more secure outdoor spaces based on the curriculum that's being taught on school. And you can see the, the three options there were all kind of inwardly focused options with courtyards of. there. We're all kind of inwardly focused options with courtyards of either fully enclosed or open courtyard. We also looked at then the initial floor plans. And we had five initial floor plans. And the, after we walked the design workshop through all five, we ended up focusing more on these first two options. And one was a courtyard option, a two-story courtyard option, and the second being a one-story kind of long extended wing option, both having new identifiable front doors, as well as for the new building and for CTE. And then also with the CTE options, we focused on these two options. So, as we kind of worked through the process, we discussed all the pros and cons of each option. And then, as a committee, the workshop then decided to move forward with these two. For the third option, for the third design workshop, we again invited the community and staff members back to discuss the final two options. We started with the CTE building and discussed opportunities between the two with two very different front doors, one having a courtyard, one not having an internal courtyard, and just a different configuration of the admin spaces and the spaces within, in the CTE buildings. As well as the new building configuration, you see they evolved a little bit from the previous workshop. We again discussed the site opportunities between the two, as well as one being a courtyard option and one not being a courtyard options and the pros and cons of those plan layouts. Again, it was also between a two-story and a one-story option. So, we really went through a lot of iterations, a lot of different avenues during our discussions with the design workshop committee. So, that led us into schematic design. So, we took all that input, we took all those different concepts, and we ended up landing on the first concept that we did, which was a courtyard option. And this was selected by the design committee. And you'll see here, this is the formalized site plan for schematic design. And this site plan has two identifiable entrances, one primarily on the left for the vehicular access and one on the right for the bus loop access. So, again, trying to keep those separate. It has a new front door off of Mountain Road for visitor and staff parking in the front, as well as student and parent drop-off. And then we have additional parking along the external loop that leads back to the CTE building and then leads to their visitor parking that now has a new identifiable front door as well. The bus loop in between the two are shared access for both CTE and the new construction. And we had a lot of discussions about timing and how that would work. And it seems that that is a very viable option to share that resource. We also have some courtyards and outdoor learning areas. You'll see the main courtyard around the two wings, some outdoor learning areas at the end of the wings. And then, as well as in the existing building B, we have some internal exterior courtyards as well for outdoor learning. Off to the right, we also have one of the other existing buildings next to the Virginia Randolph museum. And that is proposed to be used for some transportation offices as well. So, they have some additional parking and will have some areas for some transportation access to have buses stop and get what they need from that office. We also have another external building, Building L, which has an auxiliary gym and some other functions as well as we get in the floor plans. So, these are the two schematic design floor plans that we ended up on. It is a two-story option. We do have the new, the existing Building B here. And then we have the addition to Building B, which is a two-story addition. As you enter the site, the new front door happens here and that is on access to basically a public way. So, it's a kind of a public social gathering area that kind of breaks off into all of the other program types. In the center are all the shared public spaces. So, you have the library, dining, administrative spaces. So, all of the shared use spaces to these program components are centrally located. It also offers easy access to the CTE building, which will also be taking advantage of those resources. We're very mindful of all the conversations that we had with the staff about safety and trying to create essentially pods for all the program, since they're very specialized programs in a sense, that there isn't a lot of overlap that we have in some of the newer traditional schools that we're designing. So, a lot of the program is all consolidated together, but then has the freedom to then break out of those spaces and use the more social and public spaces within the school. So, on the first floor, we have exceptional education in the first two wings with elementary school and the secondary exceptional education. And then in the existing building, we have the elementary school component as well as the family and community engagement. The powerful thing about the family and community engagement is it is now located in the more, most historic part of Building B, which was the original six-classroom schoolhouse and auditorium onsite. And then it was added on to throughout the evolution of this, of the site. So, we saw that as a space that could celebrate Virginia Randolph and add to your experience on campus and add to the museum as well. And we plan on having that kind of sprinkled throughout the building to represent her. There is a wellness center, which we found out is very helpful for extracurricular activities where the students actually have choice in parts during certain times of the day to go and have extracurricular activities with staff. And then on the second floor, we have the middle school and high school components. We found out that the middle school and high school components do share spaces and a lot of the middle school students do have curriculum overlap with the high school staffs. We found that our high school students and their curriculum, so we found that that was a nice home base for them to be able to share that two-story or the second story of the school. There's lots of opportunity for natural light through the center part of the building to have overlap into the second-story spaces and to allow there to be, you know, really good connection to those common spaces, not only on the first floor and the second floor. The CTE building across the way, there's a lot of program that is staying and some new program that is, that is joining that building. And it will again be its own standalone center with its own admin as well. The small building down here, Building L, we're currently showing that as an auxiliary gym and then additional program space for administrative, possibly for staff for the county. But the auxiliary gym would be dedicated for the school use. And then this is just a quick perspective showing the new front door to Virginia Randolph. We wanted to take some notes from the existing building with the language and as well as the rhythm of the old building and apply it to the, to the, to the new building. So, we have some traditional elements and some traditional architecture with several different types of brick types. And then, as well as then expressing this new foundation for the school with more metal panel and glazing as well. And then our next steps are, again, to kind of formalize the schematic design process, have our user meetings in July, where we'll meet with faculty and staff to kind of drill down on those areas, construction documents, fall, project bids, late '22, and then construction starts early '23, and then project complete August of '24. So, thank you. And take questions.
If I can add real quickly, John Whack is keeping me straight. We did have an additional $5 million allotted to this project from the meals tax reserve. So, that, my apologies, that makes our total project budget right at $60 million. So, I just wanted to make that clarification. My apologies.
Well, thank you, Neil. You know, we like to keep our numbers straight. And where the source, where, where's the money coming from?
I like to find money in my pocket, too.
Say, thank you for that, Ms. Moore. And thank you for the presentation. Without further ado, I'm gonna hand it right off to Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So, I want to first just thank Dr. Cashwell and her staff for creatively coming up with the usage of the ESER funds to fund such an important project, not just for the Fairfield district, but for Enrico County and the region as well. As he stated, the namesake of that school is a national treasure. And the facility that houses her legacy ought to reflect that. And for too long, it did not. And I think that we are correcting something that we should have corrected a long time ago. Today's not about the past, it's about the present and future. So, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Cashwell. So, anyway, the renovations to the Virginia Randolph campus are long overdue. While we are so excited about this undertaking, I just want to first emphasize the importance of community input. Not only their input, but the community's involvement and communication in the overall process. Although Virginia Randolph is located in the Fairfield district, Virginia Randolph impacts students and families from all over the county. It serves many of our students with higher needs. And we've had involvement from Enrico NAACP, the SEAC Committee, the Holton Report, and other groups who have expressed their concerns and needs as it relates to layout, the function, and programming at Virginia Randolph. So, I wanted to start it by saying that. I'm very excited about Slide 12, the expansions of internally focused and secure outdoor spaces. I feel that that will give Virginia Randolph more of a high school feel because a lot of our high schools have focused on those two areas. And so, just from the work that you all have put in, engaging our staff, engaging our community, coming out with the floor plan, coming up with the initial renderings, I'm just excited. And so, nothing else to say, right? I mean, so, so Susan, quick question. So, again, both projects are projected to be completed around the same time in the fall of 2024?
That's correct.
Are there any considerations that may delay the completion of the project outside of any normal construction delays?
Well, I think we've got a close eye on the market. We work with Mosley very closely as far as getting construction reports and market reports for what the industry is doing. So, we are, you know, hopeful and prayerful that the industry will settle down some. And some of the supply chain issues that we've seen coming through won't hinder the project schedule. But that would be the only thing I can think of that would really impact the schedule that we have is supply chain and availability of workforce.
Sure. I mean, I guess I look at the litmus test of being able to do Holliday, Tucker, and Hollis Springs simultaneously at the same time. And so, I know that we have the capacity and the capability to complete the project, but there are those external forces that we have no control over. So...
That's correct. And we kind of eked in under the wire a little bit with our three projects, very thankfully. So, we are watching the market very closely to see what it, what impact it may have on the projects.
And so, I'm assuming that, as you stated with Adam, with the disruption piece, we're looking at what we're gonna do to minimize all disruption to staff and students?
That's correct. We've been working very closely with the exceptional education program and what is the best way to handle our exceptional education students that are at Virginia Randolph, as well as working with our Virginia Randolph alternative programs and looking at what we can do and, again, how we can minimize disruption and allow them to continue instruction as seamlessly as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. And you too. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. All right, Ms. Ogburn.
I'll be real quick. I echo some of what Reverend Cooper just said. This is just such a welcomed project and a long time coming for the students and staff, but all of Enrico, as Reverend Cooper said. So, I'm very excited and know there's a lot of work ahead, but the team is up to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. Mrs. Shea?
Thank you. The timeline to finish seems aggressive, but as this is a much overdue project, I am hopeful that we'll be able to hit that target. One of the first things I noticed when I really looked at these plans was, was what you all mentioned about kind of the pods of the different programming and having the elementary pod downstairs next to face and then upstairs being the middle school and high school pod. And I think, I think that's, you know, really essential as we look at programming in this building and how to leverage common spaces, but how to also have each program, you know, kind of have their, their own identity and their own pod. And so, I appreciate hearing the process, the thought process that went into developing these plans and then seeing them come to fruition. I'm excited about the continued use of the CTE space and the CTE center as we expand. And I don't know if everyone's aware, but those CTE seats are, are available to students across the county, not just students attending AVR for other reasons as certain programs or certain places. And the welding program at AVR has been just very, very successful. So, anyway, I'm excited about all these pieces and continuing to serve our students and our families in new and exciting ways. And hopefully, this timeline will hold and we can get it done. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Mrs. Atkins?
So, I very much appreciate the thoughtfulness in the approach to learning more about Virginia Randolph and the school community, not just through libraries and research, but through the lenses of the community and the lenses of students and staff. I think it's very important in order to feel what that soul is trying to tell you in design. That was critical. So, thank you for your approach in that. The question I do have is, one of the things that I've heard particularly about that building is around the auditorium. Are there plans to have an auditorium? I didn't see it in the design.
Yes, there are. So, if you're familiar with the idea of a cafeteria where we have cafeteria and an auditorium combined, that would be part of the new construction, but also keeping the historic auditorium in place for family and community engagement will also be there as well as a resource. So, we technically will have a new, new component in it existing.
The existing would be renovated as well.
Okay, that's where I was headed because it needs help.
Absolutely.
And the students will tell you the chairs are just immensely uncomfortable. So, I'm pleased to hear that they will have a refreshed auditorium to showcase their talents and listen to all the programming and musicals, all these other fun stuff that they have within the auditorium. So, thank you for that. Can you talk to me a little bit more about the museum piece? I think you said you were going to add to it. Can you share more about that?
In a sense, not necessarily add to the existing museum, but just add to the history of Virginia Randolph within our family and community engagement component. So, within that new space, just celebrate her history, as well as sprinkle that, that history throughout the building. So, not necessarily to take away from the museum, but just to add to it and somehow tie it back into the current curriculum from where she started with her curriculum to where we are now and try to find some connection between the two.
Oh, fantastic. So, thank you so much again. Your approach on this is quite unique, but it deserves to be unique. So, I'm very grateful for that. And I echo Reverend Cooper, this has been a long time coming and so glad that it's here. So, we're gonna speak it into existence. It's gonna be ready on time.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. I too am so excited about this finally happening and the creative way in which we found to fund it ahead of schedule. I'm excited about, not only when you say the word "secure," but secure outdoor spaces, not just safe indoor spaces, but secure outdoor spaces. So, I appreciate that being a priority. And then, if you could just explain to me the access point to family community engagement and why it's placed where it is, I might misunderstand the placement of it. But to me, it seems like, I think of family community engagement space being more this accessible to the entire school. And don't really understand why it, why it is where it is, but maybe you can help me because I wasn't part of the design process.
I may hop in there just for a second because we're similarly planning at the Oak, as you know, the old Highland Springs. So, one of the unique resources in the full-service community center would be things like a dental clinic or a health clinic. And so, you want to make sure this part of the facility allows those kind of visitors, you know, from the public to come and go, families, adults that might not, you know, need access to the school buildings. So being able to have those separate for visitors coming and going from that space while learning might be taking place. But then it's also proximal, so perhaps a family, you know, a parent's visiting a school counselor or teacher in the program, and they decide to use a resource there, they're able to easily connect. So I think there, for security reasons, need to be some separations for the comings and goings there, but then also that proximity. So I'm sure that's something you all discussed in the design.
And as part of the design, we're taking, the design development, as it continues, we'll look at some alternative ways to possibly give face their own entrance, but that it will still be very clear where the secure entrance to the overall building is. So that will play into part of the process as we continue on. That was discussed during our design workshops in how we approach that and how we have those components interact within the design of the building.
Okay. So as we still, we want to have it separate, but accessible, but yet safe. And then as I'm thinking about parking for this too, can you also look at maybe additional parking, perhaps near the bus, new bus depot on that side? So it doesn't interfere with parking for staff. On the opposite side, we know how limited parking in it, you know, parking is. But otherwise, I love it. I can't wait for it. And I'll speak it into existence, too. Let it be on time, you know? Thank you very much.
Thank you all. And just to introduce, Adam Byfield is our capital project manager from Facilities. He's at the back of the room, and again, he'll be working with Mosley on this project to make sure it's a success.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Cashwell, is that about it?
That concludes items for me, so I turn it back to you.
Thank you. All right, board members, next on the agenda is unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Mrs. Shea, Mrs. Ogburn?
None for me.
None for me.
All righty. Next, is there any new business, board members?
None for me.
Okay. Ms. Ogburn, any from you?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Well, the next item is the announcement of our meeting dates. The school board's next meeting actually is going to follow this meeting, and it's supposed to start at 6:30, but will likely start a little bit later. And then our next work session is scheduled for Thursday, August 11th, 2022, at 1:00 PM. Please note, this meeting time may be adjusted if needed. This meeting is adjourned.